I just do not want a white Christmas. I'd buy it with a green Christmas.
Girl, pick up them reindeers. What is going on with you and the reindeer things?
I'm live now.
Oh, this is my ho, ho, ho.
Oh, my God.
Get in the spirit, Mrs. Clark.
I am. My Christmas, we've already had Christmas with me and my grandkids because uh, on my birthday, I had all my head, my gifts already purchased under the tree and they took them. So.
Good for you. Well, my grandkids are getting of the age to where you don't buy gifts. You send gift cards and you let them do their own shopping. So you can see I don't have babies anymore.
Mayor, we are live now, so you can get started.
All right. Well, good evening, everybody. All right, so it looks like, do we have anybody who signed in to say they weren't gonna make it tonight? No? Okay. But we're dismissing Councilwoman Lawler?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we can go ahead and call the meeting to order. Um, it is 7:01 PM and we will start off with a moment of silence um, and in special recognition of the life lost in Albion over the weekend. So I'll start us off with the Pledge of Allegiance. If anybody would like to join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so City Clerk Domingo, do you wanna start us off with the roll call?
Councilmember Clark? Here. Reed?
Here.
Jackson?
Here.
Lawler? Lanu?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
And Mayor Snyder?
Here. Okay, so we do have a packed agenda. Um, just wanna remind everybody that if we're not speaking, the um, mute button is active so that we don't get the background noise. Um, but we'll go ahead with the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I have a question before we start that.
Oh, sure. I'm sorry.
Okay, so I see that we're not gonna, that Councilman Dats will be, or Jackson will be um, um, do the oath for the mayor pro tem, but before we go into that, I have some questions about the whole order of that and how that happened. So I would like to move items. Um, we approve the, what is it? The meeting minutes and the special settings. I would like to move that up before that.
So you wanna move the presentations and recognition or?
I wanna, because we have to approve the minutes of the, the last few meetings. And I would like to move that before um, she is uh, takes her oath.
So the, the items that are under, currently under the consent calendar? Is that what?
Could you explain what I'm saying, um, Haley, cuz you understand?
Kind of confused, to be honest. Councilwoman Clark, are you just asking to have the consent calendar approved before the presentations and recognitions?
Yes. Cuz I have some questions.
Okay.
So it's just changing the orders, not removing or taking anything away.
But item five, the approval of the agenda, we're just approving the agenda as it is now, not necessarily.
It can be amended. So point of information, the agenda can be amended right now, that's the point. So when we have the approval of the agenda, um, this is where you add items. For example, um, actual city manager Snyder um, has an item that she wanted added to the agenda for an email that she sent out today. So um, so right now is the time where council members can add. It just has to be with the approval of council. So uh, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Clark's um, wanting to switch around the order is allowed. If someone else has other things they need to add, that's allowed. This is the time where acting manager uh, Snyder can add some things too, as long as we approve it. We all, there has to be a majority approval.
Okay. So then, I guess, is there a second to Councilwoman Clark's motion?
I'll second, I'll second it.
Uh, Mayor, I would just like to add, yes, I sent out an email um, earlier this afternoon. I would like, I'm requesting to add um, a contract modification, the final contract modification for the North Clark Street project. I apologize, I overlooked this. It should have been um, on the agenda before it went out. It's just to kind of get the grant process. It'll allow us to get the grant process closed out with the state.
Okay. Yep. So, yeah, I see we can amend that to add. Um, so then are we then approving, or do we need to have a discussion on moving the consent calendar items up? Is that what we need to do, Haley, or just?
Nope, you can move it forward with a vote.
Okay. So all those I, in favor, I guess, do we have City Clerk Domingo take a roll call on that?
Yes, since it's virtual, she will need to do a roll call on vote for all votes tonight.
Okay. City Clerk Domingo, do you wanna take the roll call on that?
Councilmember Clark?
Miss Mayor? Miss Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Lawler.
I, I can't agree if I didn't hear what the agreement was for um, um, Councilmember Clark. I, I was having difficulties.
That's okay. She would like to have the consent calendar items moved up before the presentations and recognitions.
Okay. Got you. I'm sorry. I'm sorry about this.
That is fine. So we do, we need to have further discussion on this before we take a roll call? All right, City Clerk Domingo?
Councilmember Clark?
Yes. You're on mute.
Please, Councilmember Reed?
You're on mute.
Now? Can you hear me?
Yeah, she's on muted. Yes.
Now, we're, we're voting on uh, not amending the, what are we voting on?
Moving, moving the consent calendar items up before presentation and recognitions. Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Lanu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yeah.
And Mayor Snyder?
Yes. Okay, so I have a motion to approve the study session minutes from December 3rd.
Mayor, you would ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar. We normally approve it as one item.
Okay.
I have some modifications to the December 7th regular meeting. Um, I've sent them to uh, City Clerk Domingo already, but um, she said I do need to make sure that the rest of the council is aware of it. So um, on the second to last page of those minute meetings, um, there's just some minor edits. The, the word mayor was missing the letter R. And then the date for um, the special meeting where it says Mayor Snyder asked if the special meeting could be held on Saturday, December 10th. That should say December 12th. And that was all.
Good catch. And so do, um, I need a second to amend those minute notes?
I'll move. Second.
City Clerk Domingo, if you wanna take a roll call on that, please?
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Reed? Yes. Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
I think we lost her.
Lanu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder?
Yes. Okay, um, so those have been approved with the adjustments. Do I have a motion to approve the study session minutes for December 3rd?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Mayor, I understood uh, City Manager Snyder correctly. We uh, approved the consent calendar in one bundle.
Okay. So that we don't have to do per meeting then?
Correct. No, unless a motion is made to pull and have an, one of those individual item, um, a discussion on one of the items within the consent calendar.
Okay. And so I guess, yeah, Councilwoman Reed, that. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Clark?
So um, for the minutes for uh, the meeting that was held, hold, um, when um, um, Ms. Jackson was may, uh, made mayor pro tem, I would like to have a discussion over the agenda of that meeting and how it was changed.
What do you mean, how it was changed?
So in our last council meeting, there was a discussion where Ms. Reed asked to have a more of a, a slight um, special meeting for council members to get to know what uh, each other's intent was and where we were going to do moving forward. And that was the order that we ought to agree upon before the meeting. However, the actual meeting was held differently and the add to the agenda was to vote on the mayor pro tem when that wasn't supposed to happen until after we did that. It was not supposed to be a joint meeting. It was supposed to have been separate meetings. And you can all go back and look at the um, minutes or listen to them or whatever, or Jill can bring them up as a recall, but um, that is what Councilwoman Reed had asked for. And when I spoke with um, um, City Manager Haley, she uh, remembered that and um, said that um, it, in the past, that it had never been like that and that there was no uh, pun intended or anything like that. So this isn't pointing towards uh, trying to point fingers towards anybody. It's just a matter of protocol and the way the meeting was supposed to have been held and compared to where, what was done because of what was decided.
So we had. Yeah.
It was not decided to be do, done like that.
We were told that we had seven days to appoint a new mayor pro tem. And so if my memory serves me well, we had discussed about doing a Saturday morning and then Councilwoman Lawler was trying to find a better time because she was trying to help her parents. And then it was decided that she, or um, City Manager Snyder was gonna send out a poll to see who could attend a meeting on what day and time. So I'm not sure how the date and time got selected, like if that was the most commonly selected day and time from the majority, but that was the day and time that was settled on. And from my understanding, it got sent out to everybody's email. And so everybody had the opportunity to respond and to schedule that, that date. So.
Okay, and you're correct about that, but the order of the meeting is what I'm talking about. What was supposed to be taking place in the meeting? Not the actual meeting date. What was supposed to be taking place? And yes, you're correct when you say that we had seven days. That's why we had said that they might have to be too separate. We might have to have another meeting just to have a vote because of, we didn't know what or how long it was gonna take for the, the, the meeting greet.
Yes, Mayor, if I can add, the agenda, the item was listed as is to allow for council to share their goals as what was intended for um, the meet and greet or retreat as Councilmember Reed wanted. And then um, for if the council wished to take action on the mayor pro tem um, appointment at that time, they, you would all have the opportunity to do so. So um, myself and Clerk Domingo discussed that, and that was why the agenda was listed as is.
So the, the one I'm trying to bring attention to for each one of us, that because most of, we have three, um, well, two new members and you're a third new member, of course, um, Shane was the only one that was present at the time. Both Lynn and I, Lynn had excused herself and I had forgotten about the meeting. Then when I tried to get on, just like I was having a problem tonight, again, at first, that's why I got on so late. I've been trying to get on for like 15 minutes. Um, when I did get on, the meeting, the meeting was closed. And I had sent um, former mayor pro tem the information to let him know that I had tried to get on and it was closed. So that's, so in other words, that seems like, it seemed like a total flip. Cuz you guys wouldn't have known, because you're, uh, the three of you are new, wouldn't have known to even ask or question the agenda and how it was written. You, you understand what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
So that's, that's the point that I'm trying to bring forward.
Councilwoman Lawler?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, I do remember the conversation as Councilmember um, Clark was saying, um, yeah, the agenda was written up um, a different way, but at the end of the day, um, I think if we refer to our uh, city attorney and ask him, um, when the council approved it, um, it was approved cuz it was a quorum. So I'm trying to figure out exactly what do we, what do we all wanna do with it? Um, Councilmember Clark, do you have any suggestions about what you want, what um, what you want to be done, or do we need to be more careful? Do we need to be more aware, or?
Well, I will say this, from my own personal opinion, um, I think, yes, it should have been done the correct way in the future before something is changed or, or put in a certain way, regardless of the order. If the council has decided to do things in a different way, it should stay as is. Um, city attorney, I don't know if that, I don't know if that's his position as the attorney to speak up and say that, but um, we need to be more mindful of things um, when we look at, at the agenda. Cuz you all, you always gotta remember, it's not just us. It's also people that are listening that realize things that we have said um, and, and, and what we do going forward after that. You understand what I'm saying? So it's like, um, cuz a couple people has reminded me of things on several different occasion, occasions that I have asked for or, or, and it didn't come back around and asked me, well, you haven't got an answer for that yet. What have you found out? Cuz they thinking I'm not, you know, thinking I know about it. So that's what's making me more mindful of what we say and what we do. And before I say anything else, I'd like to um, listen to the other council members and see how they feel.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but generally, um, when we talk about approval of the minutes, it's whether or not the minutes are an accurate reflection of what transpired at the meetings. Um, and so I think, I understand the concerns that are going back and forth, but I think we're beyond the scope of what um, is contemplated by the consent calendar. So I just wanna make you aware of that. And then I would just also say to council, if, if there are concerns over um, the uh, the vote that transpired at the other meeting, there are methods available within our council rules, such as motions for reconsiderations and things like that. So um, those could always be added to an agenda by, by council.
Thank you. Councilwoman Reed?
Am I muted? You can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, I, I just wanted to say that, you know, I couldn't be at that meeting. I thought we could have it on a Saturday. And the last that I looked, that most votes were going towards Saturday, but I wasn't gonna be able to make it. But I do appreciate the fact that uh, Mrs. Jackson sent me a, a copy. All I wanted to do was get to know people better. I've worked with all of you before, but never really had a chance. And, and I was interested in knowing what you saw needed to be taken care of in the city. Because being on the council before, I, I know a lot of things that, you know, I felt should be taken care of and other thought that should be. And I just wanted to see what the new members thought should be done. And uh, but Mrs. Jackson did send me her, her qualifications. I was very pleased with them. I know she's very intelligent. I have no problem with the vote, you know, but uh, I just, I, I did not know it was gonna happen that night. But like I said, I sent my paperwork in letting you know what I, what I was looking to see and what my suggestions were.
Thank you. Do we have any other council comments on this? So then do I have, um, so I can't remember. Did we approve these or not? No? Okay, so do I have a motion to approve now?
So move.
Support.
City Clerk Domingo, do you wanna do a roll call on this for me, please?
Councilmember Clark?
No.
Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Lanu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder?
Yes. Okay, so now we're going on to the presentations and recognitions, correct? All right. So is it the City Clerk Domingo, do you do the oath?
I do.
All right.
So Ms. Jackson, if you will raise your right hand and repeat after me, I Nora Jackson.
I Nora Jackson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of the state.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
Discharge of duties.
Discharge of duty.
Of the city of Albion.
City of Albion.
Mayor pro tem.
Mayor pro tem.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And um, Chief Kip, do we have Amy DePras with us?
Yeah.
All right, Amy, so the EDC update, do you wanna fill us in on that?
Yeah, sure. Um, I do have a presentation. Uh, doesn't look like I can share my screen. Uh, Jill or Haley, are you able to do that? Or give me access? Ah, there it goes. One quick second while I. There. Hopefully you can see it now. So, good evening, uh, council and mayor. Thank you for inviting me to, to give you a little update on the EDC. I hope some of this is a reminder or refresher of where we've been, uh, but it serves a purpose to understand where we are today and really um, take time to celebrate all the, the successes that have happened through the, through the last several years. So um, you know, post-industrial Albion hasn't, wasn't good, isn't good. Uh, when the automotive changed, Albion got hard hit and blatant vacancy in the downtown was at 40% with the declining and aging population, loss of industry. There was lost tax base and aging infrastructure, just issues that uh, you know, were decades old and insurmountable and uh, it's, it's extremely important for us to understand that this was kind of the, the base of it. But what started when the boom opened in 2015 is in my, my recollection or my vision, really what started the vision for advancing Albion. This was a community-led uh, campaign to renovate a historic landmark. It's not simply a theater in the downtown. It is an economic driver. It brings people to the community. It is part of our infrastructure. Um, so, so this piece and, you know, the Kids and Stuff Museum really started that, that thought process of, you know, what are we gonna do to affect change and uh, start to see some of those um, post-industrial challenges turn around. So today, since that time, there has been almost $300 million invested in our community. Um, and that's through a number of private and public investment. You know, the college is a piece of that. The city is a piece of that. The EDC, our business and community partners, you know, Canoff, you've heard about their investment this past year, um, and, and many others. Uh, but also the Albion Reinvestment Corporation. So you take all of these players, um, and you add it up and that, that almost 300 million is an incredibly large number. Uh, so let's take a look at what, where that's really come from. The college is a huge contributor to the community and uh, their, their investment in the downtown um, helped reduce some of that risk factor. You know, historic renovation or redevelopment of historic buildings is an extremely costly uh, activity. And there's a lot of, you know, the, the five buildings or the five storefronts that they redeveloped into the Luddington Center took three and a half, 3.6 million dollars. Um, if you were to sell that building, you're not gonna get 3.6 million dollars. So it's, it's costly much more than what the building is worth. And that activity, the acquisition of the, the shuttered bank building, those are, are developments that are gonna start to, to help give the downtown that, that kickstart into, into development. But the other things that the college has done plays a part in, in meeting that 300 million number and in revitalizing our community. Both the Build Albion, AmeriCorps program and the other numerous activities that they did on campus. Um, but also the housing development incentive that they've put in place for faculty and staff through a, through a, a donation. Those all play a part in, in economic development that isn't necessarily typical of, of a small community college. Courtyard by Marriott is, is another key part of this, this landscape of where we've been. Uh, you know, Marriott didn't say Albion is gonna be our next strategic location, and yet here we are with a, a brick-fronted uh, historic-looking boutique hotel right on, on Main Street. Um, again, $12 million investment that took some creative financing. It took some partners at the table. But more than anything, it took people that had vision and um, desire to see Albion succeed to really pull this off. It took a lot of convincing. Uh, so that four, or that 12-point million dollar investment is another one of those projects that kickstarted where advancing Albion is going. is another one of those projects that kickstarted, uh, where advancing Albion is going. The Brewing Company, uh, you know, this is, I, I think in every small town you, you see or, or large town, breweries play a, uh, role in our economic development that is unique. Um, and having a brewery in Albion, especially one that not only has good beer, I hear, uh, but also have great food. And getting number one burger was just that little tick that they needed even through COVID that catapulted them into that next, you know, next, um, development or that next, uh, reach of, of, of getting people to come and experience their, their restaurant. Uh, so it, it's important to remember that though New Albion Impact Group, uh, this was their first portfolio, uh, project in Albion. Uh, this was, this was kind of a grassroots effort of, of financing this. They didn't really get a true incentive from the state or a community development incentive that we talk about on a lot of the other projects. Um, and, and today they're doing, they're doing, uh, very successful, even in spite of the, the current economic times. There has been a, several private developments, but the two that I've got mentioned are the two that really are the, the complete, um, uh, renovations. Uh, there are a number of other buildings in, in the downtown area that have had private investment that has, you know, upgraded their appearance or the interior or the apartments. But, but we haven't seen a true redevelopment except for these two. So the, both of these are, are done by Ace Property Investments. Um, it adds market rate, uh, apartments to our downtown infrastructure. It adds apartments to our housing diversification. Um, the bakery adds a service that was sorely needed. And the Brick Street Lofts redevelopment, their newest project, will see, um, new apartments hit the rate or hit the market real soon. Uh, I think they were doing a walkthrough the other day on Facebook. So these are development projects that, again, each one that we, we see happen lessens that risk factor of the next development. You know, we'll be able to pull in, uh, developers that are interested in developing in Albion, not because, uh, they've got a strong connection with Albion, but because they see it as an opportunity for a good business decision. And that's where we need to get to because right now the projects that we're seeing are because, um, they're very, they're tied to Albion. They want to see Albion succeed. They're, you know, I'm not going to say they're not a good business decision because they have to be, but they're, uh, the, the motivating factor, it could be different. Uh, Albion Reinvestment Corporation, I think you all are aware of, of this group. It's a, it's a non, it's a nonprofit, public charity. Um, they have for some time been talking about this big Albion plan. Uh, COVID and other things have caused a ripple in that, but they're, they're still moving forward with this. And this project itself will be the, uh, very concentrated de, uh, transformational redevelopment of, you know, three city blocks of, of downtown that I really feel will kind of put us over that edge when, when I talk about, uh, inducing, um, investment from the outside. You know, that's where I think we'll see more people look to Albion as, as an option when they're looking at other communities, um, and less about, you know, I, I love Albion, I want to see Albion succeed, but it's, it's that business decision. So Big Albion Plan, I think, will, will be that factor that I think will push us a little bit closer to seeing, in drawing in investment from the outside. A strong, uh, core to the community, a strong downtown is vital. Um, it makes the job of, of courting and attracting a manufacturer easier uh, because the first thing they're going to ask for is, you know, what's your workforce? And, and if we've got a lively and vibrant community that people want to be a part of and we also have, um, housing that they want to, you know, buy or, or, um, you know, buy and fix up whatever it is, uh, it makes it easier to attract those people, to convince those businesses to, to, to do business in Albion. But right now in the industrial park, with the city's approval of medical marijuana, we have three vacant lots that are up for sale. Um, there are several, not several, there's about three others that are still vacant but are, have been sold and are waiting development. The pictures on the screen are, uh, the newest development out there and it's by Trident Greenwell. And it's going to be a medical marijuana grow operation. Uh, so you can see that they've, they've moved forward with that and that building should be operational soon. Um, three lots available in Industrial Development Park isn't a lot. Uh, you know, a Georgia Pacific probably had four or five lots for that development. Uh, so three lots is, is starting to be, uh, cons, we're, we're considering getting full there. You know, we want to, we want to look to what the next opportunity is. So before I talk about the solar development, I'm just going to hit on the master development plan. Many of you know the, the property that's, that's commonly called the 425 out on Michigan, that's in Sheridan Township, but upon development would transfer to the city of Albion. There, it's about 250 acres out there, 40 of which is actually owned by the EDC through a land contract, um, and is considered in the city of Albion because it was, it was purchased. Uh, that 40 acres is, is the target for a, um, program that we're going to be, uh, applying for to ask for grant funds to do a master development plan. Timing is critical. Right now we're seeing, uh, the opportunities that come through the state. Uh, most of the manufacturers are looking for, you know, I think that the lowest I've seen lately is about 75,000 square feet and, you know, upwards to 250, 300,000 square feet. So considerable acreage would be needed for that, that type of development. Um, and right now this property doesn't have a plan in place. So we pitch it, uh, but there's a lot of question marks that go with it. So this, this master development plan will fill in those question marks. We'll be able to, um, show them, uh, you know, a, a, the pretty picture of the map of the industrial park and what the, where the splitage would happen, where the infrastructure would be, be needed. All those things that, um, for development, it doesn't need 40 acres. That's their first question and they're going to want to see. And then Sheridan Township, I'm sure you're all very much aware, but the, the solar development that's happening, uh, happening right, you know, right next to us is definitely an advantage to our community. I've got over 5,000 acres, but that, that number, if I'm correct in remembering, I think is closer to 10,000 when you add in all of the projects that are in the queue right now. So that, that's a, that's a huge, huge addition to our, our community that will not only bring in long-term solar development, but will bring in construction jobs over the next several years. Um, people that are going to be living in our area, staying in our hotels, eating from our restaurants, visiting our stores as they live and breathe this, this project for probably a year at a time before they go on to the next one. In addition to industrial development, community development is kind of that third peg. So you've got your downtown development, which is key. You've got industrial development, but if you don't have good community development, it, it starts to wear and tear on the community. So housing development. You know, our housing infrastructure is old. Uh, I think three or four years ago, we were rated number one, or not number one, number 16 for best place to buy a house. Because you can buy a lot of house for not much money, but you're going to put some, some work into it. You know, there's, there's not a ton that are available that are, you know, new. So we have had lots and lots and lots of conversations on housing development. And two of those, I would say, have gone from the prospect stage where we're courting them or building that relationship or getting the information that they need, that, you know, timing, that, um, handholding through all of that, to more of a project stage. And the first one, you're going to be seeing some, uh, public information on early in 2021, but it's the shuttered manufactured home park. Somebody did acquire that and that is going to be coming wild, wildflower crossing. Um, I had the opportunity to look through some of their marketing information and, um, some of their models and was very impressed in what they're going to offer. It's not what you would consider a mobile home park. It's a manufactured community where it is a very close-knit community and that's, and that's what they're, they're looking for. Where your neighbors know each other, you're outside and, and hiking and, and other, other activities, but also have community space and, and some sort of, uh, community, um, center. There's also been the pre-sale of four construction, four new construction homes in that Harrington neighborhood, which is that neighborhood that connects the college to the downtown. Uh, why this is so important is if, if, if you've recently been trying to build a house and you need to have that, that house mortgaged, you realize really quick that the market information that's out there, the comps that are out there, don't support that. So if, if that house costs 250,000 to, to build, you're not going to get 250,000 to mortgage it. So this, with the sale and, uh, or the construction and sale of these four homes, it will set market rate and give comps that are comparable that, uh, will help our market. So in addition to, you know, other housing developments that might come in, it'll open up us to more new construction or, or, uh, of single, single homes. So, you know, it's not going to just take a developer. I think you're all aware that the Calhoun County Land Bank has done a pretty, pretty great job on, on cleaning out some of the, the housing that, that went, that reverted back to them and, uh, you know, de- demolishing those that, that weren't, you know, going to be sustainable. Um, so we've got lots of infill opportunities in the community. We've got sites that have some challenges, but are great opportunities for building houses. Uh, I just recently had the opportunity to take a Grand Rapids, uh, team through 500 Barien, which is the old Union Steel or the Dog Park. Um, and then we walked the downtown and, and, and had an opportunity to get them to understand a little bit about Albion. Uh, there's definitely still question marks with that site and we're working with, uh, an EPA grant that we have to understand today what kind of environmental issues still exist. A lot of work was done on it, but that doesn't mean that it's, it's not, there's no contamination still. So we're working towards that. The other big site that we have is the urban renewal off of CAS. We had a very, um, interested party on that that, uh, had great legs, and, and I mean, the project had great legs. It, I, it had one that, uh, a connection to Mischda Housing. Uh, you know, I thought we were really going to move forward with this one. But in the process of that due diligence, we uncovered environmental issues there that I don't know that any of us were really expecting. Um, we all know that there's going to be contamination on most, most lots. But what we found at, at that property in particular was that it was several feet deep. And I mean, to the tune of seven, eight, nine feet deep. So, you know, you're not talking about removing, you know, 18 inches of soil. You're talking about removing lots of soil and that remediation cost would be very expensive. Uh, so that project did slow down, but that's still the perfect, you know, one of our, one of our most perfect sites for housing development. And we'll work with, um, our partners to figure out a creative approach to remediate that site, if at all possible, before a project is, is identified. And if a project comes along that's willing and able to remediate that within the, the business scope, then we'll work with our partners to make sure that that can happen. Um, but with each project that we, we do environmental work, we get more information. So when we market that property, we fill in more of those question marks. I, uh, I've given you our contact information. Um, it's, it's myself and Christine now. Uh, COVID has not been kind to, to many of us. We, we've lost staff. Um, I will tell you right now, we are extremely concentrated or, or spending a lot of time on, uh, some new entrepreneur, entrepreneur, entrepreneurship. There we go, programs, um, that we're excited about. There, we're, we're meeting with some partners that, uh, have some local ties and also with partners that have some great curriculum and, um, a proven, uh, program to see what we can roll out in Albion. And, you know, I think now is more important than ever to help our entrepreneurs because, uh, like the Big Albion Plan, we're going to have 20-plus commercial, uh, spaces available. We want to see some of our own community represented down there. Uh, in the past, the EDC has, has partnered heavily with the Small Business Development Center and, uh, other partners did really take on that entrepreneur piece, uh, and to work with it. And that, that's, that's a great resource and I stand by that. However, it's not the perfect resource for everybody. And I think that's where we want to concentrate our efforts with this new, with enhanced programming, is really reducing the burdens, um, helping, uh, you know, reduce the barriers for some people. Um, and, and work with our community to, you know, take an idea and move it through the stages to a business plan. Uh, we've also been spending a lot of time on our COVID relief plan and you'll see later, or you'll see on your agenda here later, uh, we're going to ask for an amendment to the revolving loan fund as part of that. Uh, you know, for the last nine months, uh, we've watched the environment. We've made aware, uh, the people aware of all the programs that are out there, always knowing that at some point, programs were going to start to, to run out and dry up. And it would be a time that we would want to make sure our community had a program in place to respond. Um, I hope to be back the beginning of January to, uh, present those programs in place, but you may have already seen them on the street and, and had, you know, have questions and I'd be happy to answer those. Um, we're getting interest in them. Uh, but come January, we'll come and ask for an amendment to our budget that will allow those to be approved, um, and actually close on some loans and some grants for our community. The, the thing that's most important is, uh, it's, it's a program that we have control over. Uh, you know, all the other programs from the federal government, the state government, um, it, it's, you know, we're either looked at from a state perspective or we're looked at from a region perspective. And by region, I mean, we're competing against not only Battle Creek, but Kalamazoo and, and, um, you know, many other areas, South Haven. That, uh, the economic impact can be greater. It's easier to show because they've got more employees. They've got, uh, you know, it'd be more of a, of a deficit in the downtown, whatever it is. It makes it a, a lot, a lot harder to compete in that arena where the programs that we've put in place are specific to Albion companies, uh, whether that's the city of Albion, depending on the program, or the Albion area. Uh, so I really do hope and, and, um, I hope to see lots of activity in that and that through all of this, we don't lose any businesses. Uh, because the small businesses are the heartbeat of our, of our community. So with that, I will, uh, answer questions if you have them or, uh, let you get back to your agenda.
Do we have any, um, questions for Amy? Councilwoman Lenell?
Um, thank you. I, I have a more of an open-ended request. Um, you mentioned the, the charming homes. And, um, as I, uh, spoke to residents in the community in, in the process of campaigning, a lot of people are concerned about the increased, uh, price of new homes on the market. And, um, you were explaining somewhat about the comps and the necessity of partnerships and the different elements of, uh, you know, where the cities at and what's required. And I was just, um, hoping that that could be, um, explored more in depth so that, um, not only we have a greater understanding, but the community does as well. Um, you know, the different protections that are in place for property taxes rising and, and things of that nature are certainly a concern for community members when they see these new developments happening. So, uh, that was just something I wanted to, to put on our radar.
Councilwoman Lawler?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I have, um, two questions, I think. Okay, so, um, I heard you speak about the 500 Barien Street project. Um, and about an EPA. Do you have a timeline about when the EPA will start?
Uh, not sure exactly your question, but let me give you some more information and maybe then you can clarify. The, um, EPA grant that we, uh, received through a coalition with the Calhoun County Land Bank and the city of Battle Creek, it's actually the second grant. Uh, so we've already got one, $600,000 one that Albion saw about. So we've already got one, $600,000 one that Albion saw about $200,000 of. And this is the second $600,000 that we'll see about $200,000 of. That one should have started October timeframe. And they're still in the midst of fine tuning that agreement. But the funding that will come for that will actually be, some of that, obviously not $200,000, will be spent on that 500 Barien to do soil testing, water testing and gas testing to understand the impact on that parcel today.
Okay, I just was wondering was, have you guys started on it? And you said October, right?
Yeah. The EPA grant was made available in October, which we're still putting fine tunes on. You know, everything's a process and you got to wait for everything. We anticipate the actual soil testing to start probably within four to six weeks, although I'm nervous that then we get into frozen ground and stuff. So it can take time, but it should be starting in early 2021.
Okay, this is my last one, please. Are there any future meetings about the 500 Barien Street projects coming up?
Future meetings with the, with the development teams?
Yep, or just discussion period that may be open to a council member?
Well, we always look for your input. And, and no, I don't have any on the books right now. And I would, if you, and I know you always have an interest with that particular parcel. But I would, I would be open to you being part of some of those development meetings when they, when they come about. We had the opportunity to, while walking downtown, talk to a business owner down there. And, and, you know, the people that live in and breathe it, we sell it in one way, but the people that have lived it their whole life, sell Albion in a completely different way. And, you know, the mayor, a council person, the city manager, your, your participation in that is always welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Councilwoman Clark?
Hi, Amy. There was a development meeting with a developer from, he was from Texas, isn't that right Haley? Yes, and you were not present. And I don't think anybody from EDC was present. And I think it would be, we should get that information to you because he was very interested in the Albion area. He's actually working with Battle Creek also as we speak and some of the, in the western side of Battle Creek with the Neighborhood Inc. program. And that's how I was able to make contact with him. So I want to make sure that you get that information so you can start some dialogue with him about that.
Oh, thank, thank you very much. I remember that meeting came about and I wasn't available. So, yeah, there's a lot that we're working with. And like I always say, the wider our net, the better our chances of success because there's a lot of no's before we get a yes. So absolutely, I'd love to connect with them.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments for Amy before we move on?
I, yes, Ms. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm just, you know, I'm thinking about the discussions that I've heard in, in the process of conducting community economic development, research in the city. And I'm curious if, I don't know how regularly you present to us, but in the next interval that a presentation is in order. And I know this will be involved with the revolving loan fund as well. I'm curious with, with everything that is growing and coming, if we could have a lens directly toward the most marginalized and lowest income households in, in our family and really look toward that in terms of how there are community benefits for development. That, that seems to be something that needs to be on, on the forefront. And I would just be curious if you have research to speak to that specifically. That would be very helpful.
So the entrepreneur program that I spoke about is, is really going to be developed more towards as a resource for those, you know, those people that, you know, need more than just handing them off to a small business development center, you know, another government agency. So we're working more to make sure that they're represented and, and have the access to the resources that are, that are available for them through that. But also the, the RLF programs and the grant programs that I'll be asking for your approval next month have a preference for minority and women-owned businesses. You know, we want to see, that, that's kind of what I alluded to, that the other assistance programs that are out there that through the CARES Act and through the state, you know, it's, it's the bigger fish that get the, the money. And we don't have any control over that. Well, we do have control over this. So the, the programs that are put in place, I really hope to see those businesses that, that we wouldn't normally see apply for things, apply. Because one of them is actually for micro enterprise, you know, for the smaller, smaller businesses.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Amy? Well, Amy, I appreciate this information. I know for us new members, this is very helpful in getting information and updates on what the EDC is doing. And I know you're going to be around to talk again. So if anything else pops up, we'll, we'll take it at that time.
Thank you.
So we do not have a need for a public hearing this evening. So we can go into public comments for the agenda items. Chief Kip, do we have anybody that is looking to speak?
Hello? Hello?
Hello.
Oh, you can hear me. Okay. I didn't know if it was on. Garrett Brown, 1016 South Superior Street, Albion, Michigan. I didn't intend to comment, but the beginning of the meeting kind of prompted me to, to speak out a little bit. So I guess first thing I'll say is that, you know, sometimes learning curves are hard. And I think that what Councilmember Clark said is, is, you know, there's new people on the council. So picking up all the information about procedures and the policies and the rules, all that can take some time. But I, I, I want to clarify for what I heard from that conversation. And I'm addressing the, approving the agenda item, that's what I'm addressing here, is to say that what I heard Councilmember Clark say is that Councilmember Reed asked for a study session. A study session, there's no voting at study sessions. It's to have discussion, debate, get information, and then a decision is made later. What she was asking, from what I'm understanding, was how was it turned into a special meeting in which voting is allowed? And so the question that she was posing, if I'm understanding correctly, is to say if council votes and gives a directive, unless council reconsider's or re, you know, redoes that vote, no one, the, the city or the administration has to file that directive. So what I heard her questioning was who made the decision to post it as a special meeting? So I know we're not trying to point fingers, but that actually gets to the heart of, I know there was a lot, a lot of controversies in my term, but this really is kind of tied into that. And it's the issue of what powers do the council have? What powers do the administration have? And how do each side respect and navigate the, the policymaking role of the council and the administrative implementation powers of the manager? So that's the first thing. And the other thing is, I don't know how much time I have. I would recommend the council get some parliamentary training. The, I, I can't remember who said what, but normally what, what should happen is if there's something that's on the consent agenda that needs to be discussed, there's a motion to remove it and place it on the agenda, just later on the agenda as a, an action item, right? Because like, I can't remember who said it, the consent agenda is really just to speed the meeting up and have a, a group approval of really basic things. So I, I believe her name was Coco Seaworth. I did the training. I'd recommend that you all bring her back and go over the parliamentary procedure. And, but I just wanted to focus on that, that Councilmember Clark was right. There was a question about governance. And so if the council approves something, it should not be changed unless it's changed by the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Oh, did we lose her?
Oh, I'm here.
Okay.
Okay, sorry. Sunny Brown, 713 Orchard Drive. I second what I heard from Councilmember Clark and former Mayor Brown. I was sitting here listening. And from what I could understand, Councilmember Clark's concern wasn't with the choice of Mayor Protim, but the actual changing the work session to a special meeting. A special meeting can be called by either the mayor or two council members. And that, that's the way that happens. The agenda item on the declaring a local emergency. As a COVID survivor myself, I support any and all efforts to keep individuals safe. I just ask that the council consider, you all meet twice a month usually. And we have staff and workers at City Hall that are there five days a week and interacting with the public. So I would just ask that you, in declaring the local state of emergency, to keep the council meetings virtual, that you consider possibly restructuring and protecting the staff and our employees that work for the city. COVID is a serious illness. It should not be taken lightly. So I just wanted to, to throw that out there. Thank you all.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments, public? Nope, we good? Okay, thank you all. Okay, so now we're going into our individual items for a discussion. So the first one, Attorney Harkness, are you going to?
Generally, Ms. Mayor, you'd need a, a motion and a second on the, on the resolution before we go to discussion.
Okay. So we've been able to read the resolution. Do I have a motion to approve?
No move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so just briefly, Mayor and Council, the resolution to declare a local state of emergency is essentially to allow the council to continue to meet virtually. You may or may not be aware, the state legislature made some changes. I want to say they took effect in October. It basically allowed any municipality in the state to continue to meet virtually through the end of the year. But come January 1, that was severely limited to only certain circumstances. One of those circumstances is if a state of local emergency is declared. So what we've done is we've put together a resolution basically saying COVID is ongoing. It's in the interests of the, both the council, the staff and other employees, as well as the public to continue to meet virtually to minimize any potential impact that meeting in person would have with COVID. As a side note, I would indicate, I know that the legislature is currently working on at least one bill to further modify the Open Meetings Act to extend essentially the legislation that was passed in October. As of today, it has not been signed. I expect it to be signed, but I didn't want to take any chances with it not getting passed before your next meeting. So I would recommend approving the, the local state of emergency. Right now, we've set it up to continue through April of, April 30th of 2021. However, the council can terminate that state of emergency at any time that it deems appropriate. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Attorney Harkness? Comments? Okay, so then do we take a roll call to vote on this?
Yes.
Okay. City Clerk Domingo, do you want to take a roll call?
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Lanu?
Yes.
Williamson? And Mayor Snyder?
Yes.
All right, the approval of the resolution for the fiscal '21 budget appropriations. Is Tom with us?
Yes. If you want to, we just need a motion to, before we-
A motion to? So a motion to approve the resolution?
No move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
May I would just share, so before you, Council, you all were provided with the fiscal year 2021 budget recommendations for your considerations as what was, same as what was presented at the November 21 study session, as well as the December 7 public hearing. The budget was prepared in accordance with the City of Albion's Charter and Code of Ordances and the Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act for Local Units of Government, Public Act 2 of 1968 as amended. The fiscal year 2021 general fund budget with estimated revenues of $4,690,210 and estimated appropriations of $4,839,065 is balanced with a planned use of $148,855 of fund balance. The total budget for all funds is $13,544,566 in revenues and $14,485,085 in appropriations. I will also like to note you, the 2021 fee schedule was also included. The only change for 2021 are the sewer rates. You'll see a 7% increase, but please note, this was approved back on April 1st in 2019 by council. And then tree dump for 2021 has been increased to $15 to account for the additional expenses for the newly composting site that will be created starting 2021. So with that, we are recommending approval with what has been presented.
Anybody have any questions? Councilwoman Clark?
Yes, I know that there are some positions that, in, in, in the City Hall that need to be filled. And as I was looking through some of the reports, I might have missed it, but I was just wondering, because I know we had discussed it one time, possibly have an assistant city manager. And there was one other position. I know we had talked about having, hiring some minority police officers. And one other position, help me Shane, if you can remember the other one that we, and I didn't see them in the budget as going forward for 2021. So that's, that's the question.
For the assistant city manager, I will note, it is kind of an awkward situation. As you are aware, I am currently the interim city manager, as well as the assistant city manager, human resources coordinator. So for, that position has not been posted just until a decision is made on whether, what to do with the city manager position. I didn't feel as appropriate to post and fill my previous position before a decision was made for the city manager position. And I do know that we have a few open police positions within public safety and that they will be filled within 2021.
I understand that. You just, I'm, I'm not saying filling, but showing them in the budget so we can show where there's adequate funding available for if we, if whomever is hired for that position or whoever moves into whatever position, the funding is all there. So we don't get in the future later asking the question of where we're going to, if we hire one, where are we going to, where's the funds coming from? That's what I-
Yes, the funds are, they are included in the salary wages for those two departments. Yes, the funds are, they are included in the salary wages for those two departments.
That's what I was saying, I didn't see it.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
And I and I just want to clarify for council when the the positions that were referred to within public safety. One of those positions is a liaison officer. And and to be clear, it it I believe what was intended to be referenced was a a minority liaison officer, not a minority officer. Obviously, the city cannot make any hiring decisions based on race, gender, ethnicity, sexual orientation, anything of that nature. And so obviously, we'll be hiring the most qualified candidate. So just want want to make that clear for the council and the public. It's a minority liaison officer, not a minority officer.
Thank you for that.
And I would just like to clarify, the positions that are listed in the budget are the positions that we currently have filled. Councilmember Clark, all the positions that you referenced, they are budgeted within the salary and wages for those specific departments. So the funding, it is there.
Any other questions or comments? Councilman Williamson?
I just had one question concerning revenues are roughly almost a million dollars short of appropriations. And I remember we had a conversation at the last time we approved a budget that we couldn't we couldn't have expenses higher than revenues or else we wouldn't be able to approve it. Is there, am I, I I feel like I might be missing something. So just help me out there.
Nope, that's what the planned use of the hundred and forty eight thousand eight fifty five from the from the general fund balance will be used to cover that. The difference between the revenues and appropriations for twenty twenty one.
Okay.
And Director Mead, please join in, chime in if I'm not.
Yeah, if I can, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Tom Mead, Funding Director. Councilmember Williamson, was was your question regarding general fund only or were you looking at total budget that?
I actually understood, I actually understood the general fund piece. So what we did, we anticipated that we're going to pull the one forty eight eight fifty five out of the fund balance to cover those expenses. But overall, what we show is a pretty big difference between thirteen point five and fourteen point four. I'm I'm guessing that we're pulling money from other places to spend this year that aren't listed as revenue or revenues from previous years. Is that is that accurate?
The biggest thing when you're looking at the total is you got to remember, we've got several different types of funds in there. So for one thing, we have the enterprise funds, which of course have depreciation, some large depreciation expense, which is a non cash expense. So it doesn't really reduce our balance in a way. I mean, it does on paper, but it doesn't reduce our cash or anything to keep operating. And the other big thing that affects it a lot is the trust funds, particularly the public safety pension trust. When it's, you know, twenty one, twenty two million in assets and you really don't know where the market's gonna go. We will or can see a lot of unrecognized loss or or lower unrecognized gains than what we would like to see. But again, it's, you know, it's a market thing. And right now with COVID and things going on in the market, we just kind of conservatively estimated that low. And like I said, when you're talking, you know, twenty two million in assets. You know, you can easily have a million dollar swing one way or another, you know, so. When you're, it's kind of misleading, I guess, to look at the total at the very bottom, because there's just so many different types of funds that are included in that sum of of, you know, those totals. If that answers your question.
It does beautifully. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? City Clerk Domingo, do you want to take a roll call on this?
Councilmember Reed? Yes. Jackson?
Yes.
Yes.
Lanuel?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
R?
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder?
Yes. Right, do we have a motion to approve the resolution for the twenty twenty budget amendment?
No move.
Second?
Second. Second.
Tom, did you have input or?
Yeah, Mayor, I will, I can just add, similar to the twenty twenty one appropriations. The twenty twenty budget amendments were presented during the November twenty first study session as well as the December seventh public hearing, and we are just recommending approval as presented.
Any questions?
The only thing I'll add to that, if I can, is I try to remind the council members each year, the what the auditors look for when they come in to do our audit on expenditures is did we spend more than what council has approved? If we spend less, there's no, you know, we're great, we're 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 good. If we spend more, then we get written up, even if it's a really small amount. So on this particular item, we try to go very conservative towards the end of the year to make sure that you know, there isn't some unexpected thing that pops up between now and the end of the year after you guys vote on this or something that could really swing, you know, swing it one way or another. So I I know one year, I think we had a big fire truck repair done that Bill came in right near the end of the year, like a hundred and twenty thousand and stuff. So we try to, we try to, you know, be very conservative in the expenditures. And if you look back historically, we have always come in lower than what we bring before you for this approval. So I don't anticipate it being as bad as what we have down there. But again, we're just trying to be conservative in case some something comes up, so.
And we appreciate that. Any other questions or comments for either city manager or our finance director? City Clerk Domingo, do you want to take a roll call on this?
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Or yes or no, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Lanuel?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Yes. And Mayor Snyder?
Yes. Right, do I have a motion to approve the food hub equipment disposition?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Amy, are you still on? Can you give a little explanation on this?
She is not on.
She is, she is.
Did you call on me? I was rejoining or something.
Yes, Amy, yes. We're talking about the food hub.
I'm sorry, I won't repeat everything that's in your packet. I I know you've had an opportunity to read it, but I'll just give you a quick summary. As everyone is is probably aware, the EDC board has decided to close the Albion Food Hub. But in doing that and looking at what that means, the food distributions that that have taken place there since, so god, about a year ago, May really are a a piece of of that of the community, that social social programming for the community that's that's sorely needed. Especially through COVID, we we found that we weren't able to go from two distributions a month up to like six or seven. And and we're currently at three distributions a month because the infrastructure was already placed. The volunteer network was already in place, the equipment that was available at the food hub, all of these things made it very, very easy. So in looking at the the closeout of the Albion Food Hub, we wanted to make sure that the food security program remains active in 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 the community for a long term. So the the plan that's in front of you today is the equipment that was used or that was purchased for the incubator portions with a commercial kitchen was purchased by three main grants, two of which was under the EDC as as the grant grantee. But the City of Albion was also one of those grantees. And that, to my understanding, that money was then funneled through the ABA to buy some of that equipment. So in in your package, not only did I give you kind of the background and the summary, but I also gave you a listing of that equipment, how we came up with a fair market value of each of that equipment, and then what that disposition plan would be. So that if if supported tonight, the plan and and the granters have signed off on this plan. The money that would be would be earned from the sale of that equipment would go to fund a food insecurity fund for Albion. That could be used in several different ways. If the food initiative has to move from the current location and and acquire a new location, it could be used to acquire that building. It could be used to build out a new space. It could be used to buy equipment that might be needed, or it could be used to buy food in the future. Currently, buying food is not a need. We have a strong food balance through some partnerships. Not only through the community foundation, but the churches and Albion Homer United Way. So the the intent of this is to make sure they though that the food insecurity programs continue to be a viable option for the community and that doesn't cease. So with that, I can answer any questions, but like I said, I didn't want to, I don't want to bore you by reading this. I will tell you that the FFI program that started with, like I said, a grant under the community foundation has grown to a program that I would love to tally up all the numbers on it. It's all manual and if anyone wants to take all that paperwork and tally it for me, I I'd bring it to you in a in a nice box with a bow on it. Because there's a lot of families represented in there and I'd love to get that that information tallied. But it's 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 ongoing. Oaklawn Hospital has taken on that administrative role. And with the with the network of of volunteers that are in place and, you know, Ms. Reed is very involved in that as as well as a number of other council people and and past mayor and community members. So there's any questions?
So Amy, is it, is it going to still, the food distribution still be there or are we going somewhere else?
They will not be moved until there's a need to move. And I'd love to tell you that I know that exact answer. I don't, you know, the the building, the ABA has listed it for sale. I believe it's actually, you know, actually listed. Depending on who buys that building, they may be open to a sharing agreement. That would be ideal. But if they're not, then this disposition plan would allow us to find something that does work.
That's really good to know because we were kind of concerned about as the weather get worse. That place is kind of convenient because you can be inside just stepping out to do the boxes. But if it, if you had to be outside a long time, it would not be nice. Thank you.
Understand.
Councilman Williamson?
I was just gonna chime in and say that I I know that there's a a strong group of individuals working on this. Kalen Holblin from Oaklawn Hospital, Marsha Starkey from the Albion Homer United Way, Pastor Leslie Potts. There are just too many people to name who are working really, really hard on making sure that the food hub and food distribution, at least food distribution continues in the community. And they are, they have been meeting several times over the last couple of weeks and will continue to meet to pick out the next site for food distribution. There are all sorts of options on the table. I'm I'm really excited about the work that's being done to make sure that food access in Albion remains equitable and accessible for folks. And we owe a lot of those folks a debt of gratitude for their service. And I think that this is a, this is a fantastic use of the money to be able to put it towards capital needs for making sure that food distribution continues to happen in Albion. And I do, and I do have to know that Albion Homer United Way is incredibly supportive of this as well.
Councilwoman Clark?
Amy, the, from my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, when that building was remodeled and started up, there was a plan to have apartment buildings built over the top of it that would help offset the cost for the bottom part, you know, when it wasn't being utilized or whatever. And that's sort of the same scope of what's going on downtown. So if that's correct, what happened to that? And why wasn't it finished before we started anywhere else?
Yeah, so I don't know, I wasn't part of those discussions. I I know at one point, the the ABA had talked about redeveloping the four apartments up there and using that revenue as as a source to either help the food hub or or, you know, help them. I'm not, we we never really vetted that out. And the reason that stopped is because the program that would be used to offset the cost was not open to government entities. So it had to be a private developer or nonprofit that took on that project. So that's really what started the conversation. And I'm speaking out of turn a bit because I'm not on the ABA. I was only, you know, listening to many of those conversations. But that's really what started their their dumb down the road to to list that building so those apartments can be developed. So we did, we did look into options to to develop them. There was a point when EDC even looked into options of buying that building and developing them. But access to funding that would be required to redevelop those those apartments so they they can contribute to the revenue. It just, it's not available to a business or to a government entity.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, because we were involved with it initially and then you guys took over it, is what kind of stopped that? Is that what you're saying? Because I know City Hall, we were not necessarily the landlords, but I don't know the right words for it, but similar to that. And then you guys handled the financial part of it. But then City Hall purchased that building or something?
You know, I don't know the background on that. I know that it's currently held by the Albion Building Authority, which is basically a a government board.
Can I jump in there maybe? The time meet again. You're on the right track, Councilmember Clark. The ABA sold the Behavior Health Building on Superior Street and used the money to acquire the food hub building there on Erie. And again, being ABA, they're, you know, a division of the city. So in and in fact, the ABA is, can buy and sell property property easier than the city itself. So ABA bought it, and you're exactly right. The intent was to, because they kind of, everybody kind of recognized that there probably would not be a lot of revenue from the food hub itself, other than possibly, you know, renting out the kitchen or or whatever. But the goal was to get the upstairs finished off, have the apartments. And then the rent from the apartments would then cover all the costs, you know, for utilities and maintenance and stuff like that. And unfortunately, what basically happened is the ABA just ran out of money. They they don't have any big revenue streams coming in. So they just, like you said, they acquired the building, used some of the money for the renovation of it. And basically just kind of ran out of money to where they never could come up with enough to finish upstairs. And then as Amy said, they thought at one time they had a grant that would or a program that would allow them to do it. And then as they got looking into it, they found out that that program was only for private owned property and not a, not a property owned by a city affiliate, if that answers your question.
Yes, that is. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Amy on this?
Just want to, I'm sorry, just want to inquire about the items that are
the items that are highlighted in the bold area.
Yes, so through the negotiations on with the grantors, anything that was over $5,000 for acquisition was an item of interest. So we, you know, you know, the the tables and the sinks, the things that are are less than 5,000 are still important. But the the ones that were acquired for more than 5,000, so that was the two walk-in coolers, the walk-in freezer, the double stat gas oven, and then the 60 quart mixer. Those items, we needed to really work on getting a fair market value. And the one low, the one grant, the one that the city of Albion is the actual grantee for has a repayment clause in it. If we're not to use this for whatever the intended use was, we have to pay back the federal portion of that. So the way we got around that is by this disposition plan and and their approval of the plan, provided that you support it. So we don't have to pay back 54.12% or whatever it was of the of the money for those items. So the only reason they're highlighted is because they're the ones that were particular interests to the grantors.
Okay, that answered, that kind of went into the other part of the grantor. So you answered that also because I see that there were a few you need to pay back and then there's some that's not. Okay, thank you.
And Councilwoman Lanier, did you have a question?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I see here that the Albion Building Authority requested that the Food Insecurity Fund be set up through the city versus the original plan of either the Community Foundation or Albion Homer United Way. And I was curious if you know which which way the fund will be ended, will end up being set up.
So Haley was gonna take a a look internally to make sure that there isn't a reason that the city couldn't hold it. The EDC and, well, I guess the EDC and the grantors have all signed off on the plan that it would go to a third party. And that being either the Community Foundation or Albion Homer United Way. So the ABA's request that it be done through the city would just be for the pieces of the equipment that are tied to that one grant, the one I just spoke of. So the the basically the two walk-in coolers and the walk-in freezer. So the fair market value from that portion of the sale will probably go to a fund under the city that the city council will have to approve the uses of under the same agreement that the remaining funds will go to either Community Foundation or Homer or United Way under the same agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Are we all good on this? Awesome. Okay, City Clerk Domingo, will you take a roll call on this, please?
Councilmember Waller?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the amendment to the revolving loan fund plan?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Amy, do you want to give us a little bit of information on this?
Sure, so the revolving loan plan, and and I apologize, I probably should have given you some background information on this. The revolving loan program was a federal program that we de-federalized the end of last year. So it is now run as a local only program. Really what that means is is we are no longer tied to some of the federal mandates that are required and there were considerable, like job creation, you know, the job creation number had to be had to be part of that equation. And the reason that we looked at de-federalizing it was because we weren't getting the money on the street. Some of those requirements prohibited us from actually making loans. So the the amendments that I'm asking today are really around that emergency exceptions to the policy that will allow for the grant or the loan programs that I'll ask your approval for at the beginning of January. So this section is pretty generic in language, but it allows for us to write a specific program that would use use the RLF funding. And then then the two administrative amendments are minor, just removing some information and clarifying, which has been our practice to not use income derived from this program for anything but growing the fund. We used to put a small, small amount towards salary, I think like 5%. We we don't want to do any of that. The the interest that comes off of of loans that we make will will come back to us. And just so you have an idea of of kind of the the girth of this this program, we've done 30 loans since the creation of the RLF. And there are no open loans right now. The the last open loan was just paid off the within the last two weeks. So there's currently no active loans. But we have had a number of write-offs. The last write-off was done on on one of these loans back in 1991. So since that time, all loans have closed and and been fully repaid.
Awesome. Yes, Councilwoman Clark?
Yes, so Amy, because, you know, Austin Street is one of the areas in precinct one that's being looked at as far as redevelopment and as well as Eaton Street. Is there a possibility that we could end this loan development and put it, make some provisions for that area specifically? So if we, because I know there's a few people that are interested in looking at some of the buildings in the 600 block on Austin Street to be able to get that same type of money and and pay it back.
So part of having a local only plan now, Vicki, is it allows us to be creative in some of that. Like I said, with federal programming, it was tied to X number of jobs either created or retained. And that's the max that we could we could give out because it was a prorational amount per dollars. So yeah, there's there's ways for us to do that. And I don't know that we have to call out the development. Would I, because this fund, this revolving loan fund won't fit for everybody. It's gap financing. So if we can get it financed some other way or through other resources, we want to do that. But I think the way it stands right now today, we have enough flexibility to to do some of the work that you're talking about. The more the more you guys sell this and and tell people to come down and talk to me, we just don't get very many people interested in this program. So I'm hoping with the COVID response programs that more people realize, you know, it it is a source of of financing that can be used.
Okay. Thank you. Councilwoman Jackson?
All right, but I have to ask, I guess to help sell this, can you just give me some kind of scenario, some synopsis or something to help me with that part of the gap?
So yeah, typically this is used for for certain things, like if you don't have enough collateral to collateralize the loan and your bank is telling you you've got a $50,000 gap, it's gap financing. So we would, we would close it, we would run second to the bank. But it can also be used for working capital or something. So if you're already overextended or the banks have denied you, this is a fund that that can be used to, you know, come into play there. Not sure if that answers your question. I would love if you guys, you know, because not everyone's familiar with it, that I I would be happy to to educate you more on it and and kind of give you like a one pager that you can use. I mean, that's one of the reasons that we did de-federalize. We weren't making enough loans and we were always in in trouble with the federal government because we just weren't making the loans. And 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 so the more we can get it out there, the more we can let banks know it is available. You know, this, that's how we're gonna do it.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Reed, do you have a question?
I'd just like to know if, because to be very honest with you, there was so much reading in this that I didn't get finished with all of this. If we could work on this and and talk about it at the next meeting, would that be possible? And any other information that we could be given about it?
Amy, were you planning on presenting again? I believe it's a January 4th meeting?
Yes, I'm I'm gonna be asking for a budget amendment at that meeting to allow the EDC fund balance to be used for the grant programs. So it it does tie together. And I don't think it would be detrimental to timing of small businesses to use these funds if it if it was delayed. But I also, I think the the piece of it, you got to remember the amendment that I'm asking for is just that small section. The rest of the language in that, that plan has been approved and we're operating under it. So the the piece that I'm asking for is a very small section.
Councilwoman Reed, are you okay with those two pieces that she's talking about?
Yes.
Okay. Councilwoman Lanier, did you have another comment or question?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Amy, thank you first of all for the amendment to make sure that all the funds are growing, using to grow the fund. I just wanted to acknowledge that. Also, a one pager would be very useful for making sure that business owners are aware of this resource and and understand how they could access it and how they, you know, how it could be applied. We did receive an email regarding the concern of who has received this so far. And I noticed that in the language, and you mentioned it earlier when we were speaking, that minority and business owners are listed as a priority. And so I am curious about the background and the history, if that could be something you speak to more maybe on January 4th, if you are available then. And then, yeah, just making sure that this is being actually targeted and marketed to to those business owners in our community and and how we can work together to prioritize that.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments? Awesome. City Clerk Domingo, will you take a roll call on this, please?
Councilmember Lanier?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder?
Yes. All right, do we have a motion to approve the 12 Medical Marijuana Grower renewal licenses for the Greenhouse Farms?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Do we know, is John Tracy on with us tonight?
Yes, he is drunk.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can, John.
Okay. Okay, so Greenhouse Farms, which actually owns a building, 108,000 square foot building over at 930 Elliott, had originally applied and received and was approved by council in 2018 for 12 medical marijuana grow licenses in 2019. With licenses having to be renewed on an annual basis in 2019. Once again, the council had approved the renewal. And this year in December 15th, it went before the planning commission once again after review by Public Safety Planning Department, the city attorney and finance director and also the city clerk. The planning depart or planning commission had decided to recommend that the city council approve the renewal of the 12 grow licenses once again.
Do we have any questions? Or comments for John Tracy? Councilwoman Lanier?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Tracy. I just want to acknowledge that I know that this has been a a concern. It was a concern going in to have medical marijuana growers in in our city limits. And I just wanted to hear your thoughts on how this first year went.
I'm sorry for, okay, so a couple of different things. Medical marijuana, for all intents and purposes, is very, very much scrutinized by state on how it's handled, even as far as disposal, the any byproducts off of from for sewage and and such. In reality, as of yet, we actually haven't had any marijuana growing grown under these licenses. One of the things that kind of threw a little bit of a curve to some of the investors in these type situations, of course, has been the recreational marijuana now. So at this point, Greenhouse Farms has not actually grown any marijuana with these licenses at said address. So and in fact, citywide with any of the other licenses which we have, nothing has been grown as of yet. We do have another facility being built. But nothing, nothing has occurred yet.
Thank you for the update.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Tracy? Okay, City Clerk Domingo, do you want to take a roll call on this for me, please?
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
And Snyder?
Yes. All right, do I have a a motion to approve the Medical Marijuana Processor Renewal License for Greenhouse Farms? Second?
Second.
John, anything you want to add for this?
Just primarily, they have, once again, in 2018, they originally acquired one processor license, which was approved by council once again in 2019. They renewed it with the council's approval. And 2020 here, they have been, it's recommended by the planning commission for council approval once again.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Tracy on this item? Okay, City Clerk, City Clerk Domingo, will you take a roll call for me, please?
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder?
Yes. All right, so our next item, I know that Councilwoman Reed kind of brought this up, but I wanted to make sure we got it included on today's agenda is to look at areas within each of the precincts so that we can kind of determine and figure out what may need the most attention. Councilwoman Reed, you kind of want to talk a little bit about this and why this was important to you?
Yeah, I talked about this one last time, when when we had the last council. But I've had people who have been commenting to me about things that they see around Albion and how junky sometimes the city is looking because things are just being thrown out. I was very pleased that I finally got the house across the street from me cleaned up somewhat. And hopefully this spring, the rest will be cleaned up. But we did not have a city cleanup day this year. So I think that's something that we need to take care of as far as as having the city cleanup day. And then I think we need to look around our precincts and see what things need to be taken care of. And maybe that's something because every precinct has a little bit of it. But you know, you go to different cities and you see how their areas, I do. Every time I go, I guess I'm used to doing that because of Holland Park. I used to go to every city and I'd always go to the park to see what they had. So I could see how we could better do ours. Well, I do the same thing about other parts of the city. And, and there's some parts of the city that's just beginning to look like a junkyard. And I don't think Alvin should ever look that way. I think we're better than that. And so I'm just hoping that, you know, if we can start working on some of these things now. We don't have snow. We're going to have snow though, but maybe in the spring we can really get things cleaned up to where we look top notch.
So, I mean, I'm with you. I really don't want this to get lost in the shuffle either. And so I just kind of had an idea of each council person drives around their precinct, maybe come up with three or four areas that you truly believe could use some attention. We compile that and then as a group, you know, unfortunately, we just can't all pile into a van to take a look at all of these together. But maybe what we can do is if we have that list, do it on an individual basis. And again, you know, we can rate, you know, how bad certain areas are and what may need the most attention, like immediately, to figure out a way to make things look better. Because I know that's the big thing for Councilwoman Reed, it's just the appearance, the, how our community looks. And I agree. If we can do some work into making sure that our community shows well, that's just great for our community. So anybody have objections to that, like coming up with three or four areas in each precinct? And then just we'll compile a list? Or does anybody have any other suggestions? Councilwoman Clark? You're on mute?
She can't be included because her precinct got six streets COVID.
Oh, she and I rolled around before and took a look at everything.
Right, exactly. And that's exactly what I was going to say.
You got, you got six projects near A D Co.
I, I, that's what I was going to say. That's an excellent idea, but you know, a lot of us have done that. I know me and, as Councilwoman Reed said, we have rolled around, wrote emails, sent information. And I do that on a continuous base basis. City Manager Snyder will probably attest to that, that I send emails about things I see. But what we need to get better at, it's good to do that, write those in. But how are we going to hold ourselves accountable for things when we do that? That's, that's all I would like to see, you know? And even if we can't do it, that's fine. Well, let's say we can't do it now and say why? So people understand in the precincts why it's not happening and thinking that we're just not doing anything.
Councilwoman Lanu, did you have something to add?
Yes, Mayor. Along those same lines, I was going to say with regard to your idea having a deadline. I, I think that previously Counselor Reed mentioned there isn't snow or leaves. This is a good time to be able to really see the state of our streetscapes and, and outdoor terrain. So I, I personally think, you know, it might be a good, I don't know how busy people are right now with the holidays, with the pandemic as well, but I could commit to being, you know, going through the fifth precinct before the next meeting.
Awesome. And Councilwoman Lawler, I know you brought up some areas. So I'm sure you probably already have your three or four and you don't need to go out looking for them. But yeah, I did, I just think like if we can put a plan in motion so that it stays in our mind and that we're not letting it go, like Councilwoman Lanu said, I think it would be great. So, yes, Councilwoman Lanu?
Oh, I just had one more thought. I know because it's getting darker more often now that the lighting in our, you know, sidewalks is another concern for public safety that Michigan State University Extension had already been studying. So some of these things in terms of the aesthetic and the quality of the experience outdoor, I know there, there are projects that we can work on, but that's something else I'm going to be paying attention to is the lighting when I'm walking as well during the nighttime.
All right, Councilwoman Jackson?
I just wanted to agree with Councilwoman, Councilwoman Lynn. I've done that already, just riding around. So I seen many different things. And when you brought it up, I thought that was a wonderful idea, especially the timing. So you can see a lot.
And like the vacant houses, if I'm not mistaken, I counted 32 vacant homes in, in my precinct too.
Wow.
And things like that. So that gives you something to have a count on and something to work forward to do.
All right, so like if you, yeah, Councilwoman Lawler?
So did you want to go ahead and speak, Ms. Mayor?
No, I mean, I was just going to say if everybody wanted to get me like three or four areas before our January 4th meeting, you know, definitely we can discuss this again.
Okay. I got something.
Yes.
Okay, so, um, I'm just trying to think like why is a little bit because one time before, and anybody want to correct me, it'd be pretty good, it'd be fine. That some things like if we tear out like just one square, I'm just going to put it on the floor. I got a, a sidewalk up the, over here and it's unlevel and the little girl rides her bike on it all the time. So some people were complaining about me getting this like this, at least, at least this one square done. So the little girls could, you know, it wouldn't be, no, she wouldn't have an accident. So I went to Kent Phillips and asked him. We was talking about it and he says some of the projects that need to be done around the city that some of the city workers can do. And one of them was, and I hate to tell my secret because I won't mind on first. But he said that we could take a square and the city workers could work on it. On their, on their own without even calling a contractor or anything like that. But can somebody please check into it and just give back a suggestion? And what we can do internal and what we do, what we cannot do internal on the next January 4th meeting?
City Manager Snyder, I'm sure you should be more than happy to let us know.
Sorry, Haley.
All right, anything else on this discussion item? Okay. All right, so, um, discussion item on the ordinance to amend the solid waste with Granger. It has been brought to my attention that we've had some citizens getting fined. And, you know, I totally understand why we kind of want to put this in place because we don't want people to lapse and have their waste products go unattended. Again, that's, that would cause an issue. But especially right now during COVID, people are out of work. And so I really believe that we need to address this somehow. Because from my understanding, first offense, if you are with, if you've gone without paying, first offense, you get fined $50 a day until you get back into compliance. And then if this happens a second time, it's $100 a day until you get into compliance. So I have had some people outreach and say this really is very hard to take on during this time. So I just kind of wanted to see if there was any type of amendment, any type of variance that we could put into place to help folks when they're without money.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
So just as a point of clarification, the, the way that the ordinance is drafted and our schedule fines is drafted, the $50 per day and $100 a day are conceivably possible. Maximum fines for, for first offense and repeat offense. There, oh, it is, as long as I've been with the city, it's never been enforced that way. Usually the individuals have been without service for a significant period of time. They get several warning letters. And only recently have, we really have been taking, well, we did some last year, but some enforcement action. So really they get a ticket and almost, I'd say 99.9% of the time they come into compliance after one ticket for $50. So it's, just to be clear, I mean, it's not as if there's code enforcers going out and laying citations on them every day. I mean, quite frankly, they just don't have the, have the time to do that. But it's usually just one citation after several warnings to get into compliance. And the reason despite COVID that they've been hard on that is a lot of the pricing that Granger gives us is based on everyone in the city being enrolled in trash service, which is why we're trying to bring everybody into compliance. I, I mean, I, I'm, Acting Manager Snyder and Director Tracy can probably speak to it, but that's my understanding.
But yeah, like I said, I totally get that and I know why this is in place. But City Manager Snyder, if you kind of want to give some more information?
Yeah, I'm just to feed off of what City Attorney Harkness, I'm just provided to you, yes, we, our code enforcement department, we issue several warning letters to our residents, just encouraging them to reach out to Granger, set up payment arrangements before we issue the citations. I have provided in your, the meeting packet, samples of the letters that are issued. And we do, our code enforcement office, we receive the reports from Granger weekly. So we do, we are trying to send out those letters as soon as we receive those reports to notify our residents to address this issue before we issue the citation. So we are giving multiple warnings. But for us not to issue that would need to be changed within the ordinance. So I, I just provide you with the letters that we do in the timeline that we follow with issuing these citations.
So this letter that you provided for us, this gets mailed to the residents?
Yes.
Yeah, and the, and the person that contacted me, they said that they were getting emailed. Do we have any idea how or what's being emailed?
That I do not. I know all of the letters that we issued are via postal mail. They may have received, I know you can receive your Granger invoice via email. So I don't know if they received a notice from Granger, but we do not send any, any notices of this nature via email. These are all delivered via email.
I believe Granger does send delinquency notices via email.
Okay. Councilwoman Reed, did you have a comment?
Are, are they doing that now with COVID? Are they still? Are, are they allowing people time or what?
With Granger, I can't speak on what they do on their end, but I know on the citizen, yes, we are sending several notices and letters before we ultimately issue that citation. So we are trying to give our residents enough opportunity to come into compliance before the citation is issued.
If, if I may stick on that.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
I know Granger for several months had not cut off service to a number of them until here, just, just a month or so back. So where we started picking back up with the letters and such, with the actual citations going out. So they had not, there for quite a while, they did not put off service to anyone up to a couple of months ago.
Do we know how many citations the city sends before they start getting fined?
Well, typically, typically there's at least two letters, sometimes more, depending on what the circumstances are before a citation is actually issued. And then of course, that's, as, as Attorney Harkness can tell you, I'm not sure whether we're even at in the court at this point in time with everything backed up, so.
We just had a, a, a good, decent handful come through on our last docket. There were probably 10 on our last docket. Almost all of them that actually showed up to court resolved with the, with the person that received the citation coming into compliance. And we agreed as part of the resolution to waive costs if they came into compliance. So the, the, the financial impact to them would, would be minimal as long as they came into compliance.
And if I may say, one of the letters I sent out, the vast majority wind up after the first letter, sometimes after second letter, coming into compliance. The percentage is, is low that you're not coming into compliance after a couple of letters.
Councilwoman Williamson, do you have something to add?
Yeah, I wa, I was just going to add a personal anecdote about this. We had a, we had an email hiccup in my, on my Granger account. This is pre-COVID. And I had had automatic payments on. Well, apparently automatic payments went off when I made, you know, it was a technology mistake. I didn't get my very first letter that I was out of compliance until two billing cycles. So that was six months. I thought that, like, and I got that letter and I like got online. I was like, oh crap, I need to pay. And we fixed it and we paid. But I thought that was really generous. That before the city even knew I was out of compliance, there were six, there were six months lapse in, in paying that service. And the other thing I just want to say is that if we, the reason we have some of these rules in place is because there's been such a compliance issue in the city with code enforcement. And there's been such a strong push to how do you enforce code and how do you, you know, clean up the city? And this is one of the ways we encourage and kind of promote our folks to clean up the city. Although I want to add just on the back end to that, taking into consideration the hardship that COVID has placed on folks, especially those who have lost jobs and income. I think I, I would be open to a conversation where we talk about, well, if you come into compliance, having part or all of your ticket returned to you or some sort of incentive to stay in compliance. You know, after, you know, six months of staying in compliance, you, there's an incentive to do that. I would, I would be open to something like that so that we can encourage folks to stay compliant with the ordinances around waste management. So that's, that's all I want to say. I also wanted to say that I'm extremely happy with the Granger contract. They provide exceptional service at a great price. I was really excited that they, that we went with them again during our last discussion. You know, it's, 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 it's pretty nice that we're able to do that for our, our town.
Yes, Councilwoman Lanu?
Thank you, Mayor. This, the whole notion of a single, single hauler was a really big issue for constituents when I was speaking to them. I, I think that residents feel like their voices aren't being heard in terms of how these decisions have been made. And I saw this as a 10-year contract. So I know that this is not maybe germane to the exact thing that we're talking about, but I did want to acknowledge that was something I heard and it's something I saw as being discussed in a neighboring town where there is an option for citizens who have other alternative methods for trash disposal to not opt in. So I don't know what leniency we have and, and when this discussion would take place of, of accommodating people who are having trouble meeting the compliance of our city and, and what those options are. But I just wanted to acknowledge that. And then I'm, I'm trying to understand if the, the ordinance that I'm looking at here that says it's amending 66-139 is what we're approving because it, it reads that there's $100 per diem fine for failure to comply. And, and then there was one other item within that paragraph. It says, following the 10, in parentheses, 10, notice provided by the city manager, it is recommended and, and so forth. But I think that the word day should be in there to make it explicitly clear we're saying 10-day notice. And, yeah, I, I really appreciate understanding more about why this fine is so steep and then where we actually stand. So thank you, Attorney Harkness, for that.
Ms. Mayor, if I may?
Yep.
I, I think the typo you're referring to, Councilwoman Lanu, is just in the purpose and finding. It's not within the body of the ordinance itself that, that the 10 days is actually referenced in subsection E. And it does have the days in there. But you do have a keen eye. As far as deviations from the contract, the city basically doesn't have really an option to do that until this contract is lapsed at the 10-year mark unless for some reason Granger stipulated to do that. I don't see them doing that, given that the reason we're able to keep the prices so low for the community is because part of the deal is everyone has to participate in it. And, you know, as, as it relates to the per diem, I, I mean, the per diem really, we don't really enforce that. I mean, John doesn't enforce that from a citation issuance standpoint, and I don't enforce that when, when they get to my when when they get to my office. We're very, very lenient with people. Really, it's I I don't know that it's that we haven't had any people, at least I'm from, I can speak from my experience, come to my come to court and say, I'm not on trash service because I can't afford it. It's usually they just haven't been doing it or they're thumbing their nose at it until they get the ticket and then all of a sudden they have trash service. So.
Thank you. That's helpful as well.
Yeah, for me, this is, I mean, it was just helpful information when folks do come to me, you know, giving me the the different scenarios so that I have a better understanding of how this process works once they do fall out of compliance. And it's good to know that we are working with the citizens if they do make an attempt to do the outreach in saying I need to find a solution. So I just wanted to make sure that we were just quickly jumping to find folks for falling out of compliance, you know, right away. So this is good information. Any other comments on this? Awesome. All right. So thank you all. I appreciate that information and the clarity. Discussion on our city manager position. I know that before we changed council folks in the election, city council had discussed what they had wanted to do with City Manager Snyder, whether she keeps interim, whether we open up a search. So I do want to proceed to figure out how we want to handle this. For me, yes, Councilwoman Reed?
Oh, you go ahead. I'll talk after you.
For me, you know, I definitely want to do things by the books and in public so that, you know, transparency is not an issue. So is it, should we create a subcommittee to figure out how to proceed with this? Is that something that we would normally do in this type of a situation? And somebody can kind of chime in and I'll allow Councilwoman Reed to go first. Councilwoman Reed.
I was, I don't know how how you would do it. I I was going to suggest or make a motion that we we accept this as a Snyder asked city manager. For one thing, she knows she knows more about Albien than a new person coming in. And we've got one, two, three new people on the council which are learning this. And she already knows the stuff that needs to be done for Albien. She's been here, you know, long enough to know. She's lived here her whole life and she's worked in the city. And I think so far she's done a very good job. So I would I would recommend her, if you are going to have a group that's going to discuss who's going to be it, I'd like to be one of those.
Councilwoman Lawler.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, Colin, can you tell us what the charter says? That we have when chosen a city manager? I I just wanted you to reiterate it because I don't want us to get off track and not do what we supposed to do like we did previously.
Well, I, okay, so let me, I can double check the charter, but I'm fairly certain that you don't necessarily have to. I don't think it's that specific, but bear with me for a moment while I pull up our charter.
Yes, Councilwoman Lawler.
Um, I think there was a resolution or something that said that we had to go through the process. And that I don't think we can just choose anyone. I mean, maybe we do, maybe we do know what who we want. But as far as we, I think we are mandated to post it.
There was a resolution that was done saying that certain positions had to be posted. I don't know that that was a I don't know that that was, I'd have to double check the resolution and whether that included positions that are filled by council or if that was intended for positions that are filled by the manager, but I mean, I can tell the council. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I thought he said it said all jobs had to be posted.
Councilman Williamson.
So my understanding currently of ordinance or of rules is that when you're talking about municipal jobs that the city manager is directly responsible for, directors, officers, anything from the city from below the city manager up have to be posted. That's that standard. When it comes to council choosing their city manager and their city attorney or the process, something that they can design a process around. I too, like Mayor Snyder, will is when ring forward that we continue on the road that we've continued since our last city manager and with the naming of the interim city manager is have a subcommittee of council meet and bring forward a recommendation for a process moving forward. And that could that could have so many different possibilities, but bringing to us, here's what we think the process should look like moving forward to reach the goal of naming our city manager. And then having council approve that process and then start working towards it. And I too do believe that should be open and transparent and visible for the public. But one of the advantages these committees have had the last couple of times is that they were able to to do the work and bring back thoughtful recommendations, all of which have led to positive things for the city, whether it be change in leadership and then naming our interim city manager and then allowing the time for interns, acting city manager Snyder to start to work with the new council members. So my 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 strong suggestion this evening was would be to put a subset of three of us together to then bring forward a thoughtful process at the next council meeting on how we want to go about choosing our city manager. That's that's what I would like to do.
So the way that 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 resolution, just so the council's aware, reads is that it says that the city manager shall make a public posting for not less than five business days of all paid, non-union city positions available for employment, contracted or professional positions for services shall not be required to be posted. So what's really, what's contemplated by that resolution is that the subordinate positions would be posted. I don't think it's intended to include the two appointed positions. But actually, it very clearly says it like it doesn't include the city manager or the city attorney because I'd be a professional position. And I don't think it contemplates the city manager as well. So really, and the charter is silent on this particular thing. So really, the council has two options. You can, you, well, and and whether it's a council or a subcommittee, it's you can opt to continue with Ms. Snyder in a in a in a permanent capacity, or you can do a search and that search can certainly include Ms. Snyder, but you know, it's option A or option B. There really isn't a another road.
So Colin, if we had a consensus to go with option A, how would we proceed with that?
Well, you have on the agenda discussion of, well, you have on here for discussion approval. You know, you've got an interim contract with with Ms. Snyder or compensation package with her. I think my suggestion would be if you decide you want to continue with Ms. Snyder, probably the best thing to do would be to put a committee in place to negotiate a permanent contract with her. Or I, when I say permanent, I mean, you know, for whatever number of years the council deems appropriate. Alternatively, if the council doesn't or wants to see its options, then I would suggest you just you you narrow down who you want to do the search. And that search, like I said, can certainly include Ms. Snyder, but I I would go one of those two ways.
Councilman Williamson.
I I just want to reiterate that we have a majority new members of council who have not had an opportunity to work with Ms. Snyder in a capacity to make what I would think is a thoughtful decision. We have an opportunity to work with an acting city manager for all of us to develop a relationship with her. If we were to move into a situation where we went into a into a search process again, Ms. Snyder has been through two search processes. She's been a finalist in both of those. We, I think this opportunity presents us a a situation where we actually get to work with her and see if that's who we would like to be our city manager and to and to extend that process a little bit longer would be wise because it would give the new council members the the time to see how things work with Ms. Snyder. And we never get that with any other candidate ever in any other search that we do. When we do a search, we get to interview them. We get to do a meeting rate usually, which we're not going to get right now because we're in the middle of coronavirus. And we have to make a, we have to make a judgment on things that we are guessing are going to happen. When with, if we if we appoint a committee to extend this process out a little bit longer, it gives us more time. And and frankly, it gives acting city manager Snyder more time to develop a a relationship with this council and to see how our working relationships are going to go, to see if that is who we want to be our city manager. And so I'm trying to give everyone the benefit of the doubt here to be able to make a sound judgment at the end of a process with this. I don't again, we're a month into it, we're not even a month into a new council. And I just think it doesn't look like we've taken our time to make a thoughtful decision at the moment. And again, I want to reiterate, that doesn't mean I would not like to see city manager, it's acting city manager Snyder in that role. Because I've worked with her now for two years, but I would, but I think it is prudent that we give opportunities for the rest of council to work with her.
Councilwoman Reed.
You know, I've been through several city managers. And each time they, the one before says, well, we're just going to wait until we get a city manager before we do anything. And we wait and we wait and we wait. And Albien does not move forward. We've had Mrs. Snyder. She's done a good job. She did a good job before she became city manager. Since she's been city manager, she's done a very good job. No, she doesn't. Maybe we all aren't buddies and pals, but we don't have to be buddies and pals to get going and get Albien moving forward. Because are we going to set six more months and say, well, as soon as we get a manager? I can remember our last city manager and things that we had been appointed to do. All of a sudden, everybody, when we started looking for another city manager, says, okay, we're just going to hold until we get a city manager. And then when that city manager comes, we're just going to have them dump everything and they get it straightened out. It's time to get Albien moving forward. Haley has done a good job for us so far. I don't think she's going to quit. I think she's just going to speed it up. But right now, she does not have the real, real authority to do what I am the city manager would do. She's doing, I'm assistant city manager, so I'm not going to step on any 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 toes or or whatever, and because I'm not the actual city manager. I think we need to get something done. And for us that's want to keep putting it off, putting it off, putting it off. You know, if we go back searching for another one, just like we've done in the last, what, two or three? We don't know what we're going to get. We're certainly not going to get anybody who knows Albien. And Haley knows Albien. She was born here. She lived here. She's worked here. She's been very highly respected by a lot of people that I've talked to and said, why don't you guys go and make your city manager? Okay, fine. I'm willing to do that. But if the rest of you are, you know, I'm just not for sitting around getting somebody from east side, I don't know where, who knows nothing about where I am, what we are, what we're doing, what we want to do. When we've got somebody who knows all that already.
I appreciate that, Councilwoman Reed. Councilwoman Clark, I know you had your hand up a while, too. Did you want to add?
Yes, I do. I agree with what Councilman Williams is saying. And the reason is because on the other side of what Lynn is saying, there are other people that have questions and that has said that had the voice of saying that they appreciate the fact that we're that we're not at the point that we have made a decision because we've rushed into decisions in the last three years. Yes, she is from here. Yes, I support her and all of that. But there there's there's a way that you can measure a person's performance the same way you do when they're hired. So before we, and who's to say, who's to say, because we're all speaking, but who's to say that after Haley gets her foot all the way in, that she decides that she doesn't want this thing? I'm not saying she's saying that, but that could be a possibility. So I'm saying for you to create, for for us to create a a committee like we did and put some guidelines and some things in place and some things as a parameter for a for a period of time, it's not going to hurt us. Three months from now, it's not going to hurt us, but it will give us a guideline of what we're seeing because, again, there is new council members on there. Some has listened to meetings before, some has not been participants in meetings at all. So what do, how many know, how many people on the new council know exactly what a city manager should and shouldn't do? How many people know really if she's doing the things that should or shouldn't be done? And I'm only speaking from my own point of view, because when I first came in, we were in a transition of a city manager that wasn't doing what they were supposed to be doing to a transition that 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 person was removed and we went to a new one. And the and the guidelines and the things that we use to make the decisions, I felt comfortable with on both on both sides of it because of what I learned and understood about the process and the and the job. So.
Thank you, Councilwoman Clark. Councilwoman Lawler.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I don't think this is an issue about Haley at all, because I think we all know that she she she's been doing a job and she can do the job. My only concern and what I'm by me reading the city manager position, for me, this meant to me, are we going to go through the process? Or do we have an option to just choose? So I think this, the question here is, uh, do we go through the process? Oh, yeah, Haley can sign up or whatever, but is it bad precedent on just not post it? And I'm not saying she don't deserve this position. All I'm saying is, do we go through the process? Do we want to go go through the process? And like she said, it three months or whatever, to me is not bad. But it, do we go through the process? I mean, do you just really give a job? And that's no offense to her at all, because I know she can do it, but I'm just seeing from the outside looking in.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lawler.
How do we represent ourselves and make sure that, you know, we follow the process?
Councilwoman Lenu.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to acknowledge and and build on what I'm hearing, try to synthesize a few things. I think that it is essential that we do our due diligence in terms of understanding what interim city manager Snyder's vision is, her goals are, what the position description entails for a city manager previously. I know there's been a lot of discussion, but what are the actual, you know, requirements so that we can look at all the work that she has done and and, you know, have a have a strong feeling about, you know, moving forward in that direction? If that's, you know, what we all decide. I do want to acknowledge that it is, you know, an unprecedented time. I think that our needs are going to continue to evolve in a way that's going to require visionary leadership. And so that's, you know, a big part of what I see, you know, we need to be measuring and thinking along the lines, not only what was required, but what is going to be required moving forward for our city. And I would I would just say with regard to the subcommittee that we really take into account what we are stalling and delaying by not having an an actual city manager in place, because it it has been very frustrating as a resident, as someone who's worked alongside the city, to constantly hear, well, we can't make that decision. And I know that there are major decisions with regard to our capital improvements plan, our comprehensive plan and other, you know, very big things that require that visionary leadership to be able to make those decisions. So I just want to acknowledge that I think it's great we're doing our due diligence, but there are decisions that have to be made, you know, quickly as well. Not quickly, but in 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 due time.
And I agree. And I think Councilwoman Reed had said at one time, you know, we need to move forward so that if we do decide to proceed with Haley as our city manager, then then she can hire in help. if we do decide to proceed with Haley as our city manager, then she can hire in help so that she's not wearing that, the four or five hats that she's currently wearing, and she can focus on the responsibilities of the city manager. So again, you know, that kind of that one step would make a big difference in us being able to make those decisions. So, I mean, from what I'm hearing from the majority, um, I think it's great that we are all behind um current city manager Haley Snyder. So um, I would just wouldn't like to be able to proceed uh but the proceeding in the right way. So Councilman Williamson, did you have something to add?
I was going to add that if it came down tonight between starting a process over and naming uh Assistant City Manager Snyder uh city manager, that my, that my vote would always be to name uh the current person who's been doing a good job in that role. So i- if we had to start the process over again, um I would be against that and I would be for naming city manager Snyder. But what I, but what I am saying tonight is that um, for the last two years on council, we've had people in the gal, in the gallery scream about due diligence and not doing, and not making informed decisions. And we have four folks who just joined us on council, including the mayor. And if we, if we rush to make a decision within the first three weeks and and name Ms. Snyder, the city manager, right away, how does that prove that we're going to function differently than any of the last couple of administrations who have um done some things that we all can, we can all think of right off the top of our head that were inappropriate, highly unthoughtful and not good for the city? So again, being one of, and I have been from the start, one of Ms. Snyder's biggest advocates, I, I speak to her regularly. I try to uh in the very little that I know about uh running a city, try to be helpful. Um but I, my advocacy tonight is to just delay it a little longer. But again, if it has to come down between starting all over again, we've already done it twice with Ms. Snyder uh through a search process. She makes that, she has made it both times under different councils to be a finalist uh for city man, uh city manager. So um, again, I just wanted to share that that's where I'm at in all of this. I think making snap judgments wouldn't be a good thing for our council to start doing.
Councilwoman Lawler.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, I just want to speak to transparency. Because these last couple times um us as a community, and I'm going to say us, because we all did our part in it and choosing city managers. So I don't think is either one council or another that made a wrong decision or a, a informed decision about a city manager. What I, what I, I just think that um most of us uh that have been through the city manager hiring process, we, we kind of know uh where to go with this and, and we know kind of like the signs. Um I'm giving all of us props because, like I said, we all chose um these last couple people. So it's not just one group or another, it's, it's all of us. We can't just put that off on one person. And I, I really don't um kind of like it that we just um doing Haley, I feel like we are, but this is about, are we going to go through the process? And are we not? I think we majority know what we want, but do we go through the process? So that's where I'm, I'm stuck at.
Councilwoman Reed.
Councilwoman Lawler, I love you dearly. We didn't all vote the same way. I didn't, I know.
Majority of council did. It was a more than four people.
You had a missed vote.
And, and Colin, maybe you can help us with that. How do we go about doing this if we want to make a vote tonight?
Well, you've got it on as discussion approval tonight. So, I mean, ultimately, you could take action um as it relates to the city manager position. I mean, you could say, I, you know, I moved, if you want to appoint Haley, you could say I moved to appoint Acting City Manager Snyder pending a uh a, you know, a successful contract negotiation as, as the permanent city manager. Um, you know, there's been discussion tonight about um waiting. If that's what you want to do, then there would be a motion, I would suggest a motion to table. Um but if you want to act on it tonight, someone just need to make a motion to appoint Haley. Or if you want to go the search option, you just make a motion to uh um, you can either do, you probably do it as a, an RFP, um or you could just um select several search uh companies to uh, to, to see what they would charge. But those are your options and, and, you know, just so the councils aware, as, as several comments have been made. Uh and just so th- those of you that are new to council know, and I don't have a dog in this fight because obviously I'm not a voting member of the council, but I would, I would say, I mean, um, a lot of the council doesn't get to see what goes on behind the scenes and um I would just, for my two cents, I'll, I'll put in, I'm a big Haley fan, but I'll leave it at that.
All right. So do I have a motion to proceed?
Yes. I make a motion that we appoint, that we proceed with hiring Haley Snyder as city manager.
Do I have a second?
You have another hand up before you go to that second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Williamson, did you have? You're muted.
A motion has been made. I can't speak until after there's.
So, so point of, what is that? How do you say? Porta order. That was totally, see, this is what I'm talking about. We're, we're having these meetings and we're doing things and then it's not being done in the right way. So.
Didn't Colin just say?
But wait, excuse me. So the, it should have went, is there any more discussion? Or is there uh to see if anybody wanted to make another type of motion before we just did that and canceled out another?
But don't we um move on the first motion? And then take a vote, and then if the majority doesn't agree, we do a second motion?
So, so if, if, if I'm, if, and I'm not trying to be, so just because I've watched a lot of things on council. So, so what it is, so Mayor um Snyder, um Councilman Williamson raised his hands first. You didn't call on him first. You called on Lynn. So that right there was out of order. Because whenever someone raises their hand, it's not selected, it's a, it's a selection of order first. So I don't know what he was going to say. But it would have been said if he had have raised his hand first. That's what I'm saying. That's all I'm saying. You understand? I'm just trying to keep us in order, you guys. We just can't have a dis orderly or a government that's not running in the proper protocol, because we can't have this. I'm sorry.
I moved to reconsider the motion, and I, I don't know if that's appropriate to do, uh but I, I would, if there is ability for more discussion, like to hear from interim city manager Snyder, if she does want to share anything, because I did see her motioning um her head at one point.
I don't have any comment at this time. Okay.
So point of information, uh Councilmember Reed made a motion. We were waiting on a second, um and then we can go on discussion. I'm going to second Ms. Ms. Reed's motion.
You what?
I'm seconding your motion to name a city, uh Acting City Manager Snyder as the full-time city manager Snyder.
So, so I guess we were, I guess, including verbiage on pending a successful contract negotiation. Is that right, Colin?
Yeah, I, there's a, there's an interim uh compensation package in place. My guess is both sides would probably want to have something more permanent from both sides. Traditionally, what's been done is usually a subcommittee negotiates with the manager and then makes a recommendation to council. Um and I usually obviously review the contracts for uh as to form.
So do we have a, a discussion on this? All right.
Yeah, so you have a discussion on the motion, but if you're looking to include that language, someone would, the, the maker of the motion would need to include that as a friendly amendment.
Councilwoman Reed, do you want to include that verbiage?
Yes.
And Councilman Williamson, are you okay with that verbiage?
Uh yes, I, I'll speak my piece when it's time for.
So comments, discussion, Councilman Williamson.
So um, so uh I'm getting the sense, and this is, again, I, we've been talking about this for a little while now. I can see from anywhere from uh body language to nods of heads that there are clearly people who have made their decision about who they would like to fill this role. It is clearly uh city manager Snyder is, uh Acting City Manager Snyder is the favorite here. Um, the only thing I would like to add to this is that um the, that there be a committee forum to do the negotiations, just as we have done in the past. Um, to work with Ms. Snyder on that. That way, um the committee can bring forward the package to council. Um, and at, either at the next meeting or the second meeting in January. Um, that way they can work with Ms. Snyder to uh the, work on the details of that.
Councilwoman Lawler.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, I, I just I, I, I'm, I agree with uh Councilmember Williamson about, you know, um some of the gesture and the body languages about who um this council um may or may not clearly want um what the majority is seeing that they want. Um, I just want to express to um, to Mrs. Haley Snyder that there is no doubt that I don't believe that you can't do the job. There, that is, that's, there's no doubt about that. My only concern is going through the process. If we decide to choose tonight to um just um appoint someone, Haley, it, I was, I'm going to say no, and I'm not saying no because I know that you cannot do the job. I'm saying no because I want to go through the process. Um, I think I talked with you about it, so you know my feelings about it. And um that's, that's where I stand, honey. I, you know, that I'm just trying to explain to you what I'm doing. Um and that it is nothing um against you at all. It's just about the rules. Okay?
Mayor Proton Jackson.
Yes, I guess what I would like to see, I, I mean, you know, with being new, um having worked with Haley um a lot, um but have seen what she has done, um I do would like to see the vision. That's how you can get me, even if I haven't worked with you or not. I need to, I like to see the vision. Um also, if you've already been in this shoes for two years, I'm quite sure that the vision should not be like narrow anymore. It should be more of a bigger scope. So that's where I would need to be, is the vision. I, and I know your personality. I know you have tried and I have had a few conversations and I have seen some meetings. But I would love to see the vision. So, yeah, and that is, you know, that's part of a process. Because you have, you, you know, right now, you, you do have majority of votes, even if I sat here and said no. But still, um, the process of the process is a subcommittee, sit down, talk to you, get some more ideas of what you want to do, what you don't want to do, how you want, how you see um Albion going forward. I would love to. I'm not saying that you guys don't know what you're saying, but I believe in you guys too, but I still would like to see the vision.
Councilwoman Lawler. You're unmuted.
It just seems as though to me, we, we, uh with this subcommittee, we about to take her through an interview. So, I mean, are, are we going to pose or, or not? That's where I'm, that's where I'm at.
Councilman Williamson.
So I think, I think there's a lot of confusion on council right now. And I think that's, I think that's, I think part of the reason is that there's, there's a lot of newness here. But here's what I'm going to say about this. We currently have a motion on the floor to offer the position of city manager, the full-time city manager to Acting City Manager Haley Snyder. The committee that would be convened to move forward with this process is not an interview committee. It's not a, it's not a decision-making authority where they come to you and say, we recommend her for the job or not. By voting yes tonight, you would be saying, I want Haley Snyder to be the city manager of Albion, and that that committee is being tasked with not deciding whether she continues in that role or not, but what her compensation will be, what her employment standards look like, what her contract length is going to be. Um, this is not a vote about an interview process. This is, this is basically saying, we would like her to serve in this role and we're naming her for that role. And um, and we're going to, and we're going to bring forward a contract to be approved by council. I want to speak, I want to speak a little bit to this vision that we keep talking about for the city. And I think that also shows a little bit of our um greenness on council at the moment. We as council are the folks that say, this is what we would like our city to be. These are the priority areas. These are the uh policies that we think are important. And then our city manager comes to us with a plan to fulfill that for council. Like, I plan to work on these roads, because you said roads are important. And we need to, you know, when it comes to um code enforcement, well, I'm going to help build the code enforcement team that's going to achieve the goal that council has set for, you know, minimal um infractions in a year, you know, removing uh vehicles that don't work on property, things like that. So I, I am perfectly comfortable if a majority of my colleagues are comfortable with offering this position to Haley, but understand that that comes with the risk that she will have to show us how she's going to fulfill this job after we've hired her. Um and I, and I, again, we've taken this risk a bunch of times. Um, and it feels less risky now than it's in the past because we actually have had time to know her. But this also speaks to why I was encouraging everyone that we needed a little more time. But I, but I do know, I get the sense of council that people are ready to move on this and that there is a sense of urgency. And I, I am, that's why I continue to support this motion at the moment. Uh but I just wanted to make sure I clarify for everybody. This is not an interview committee. This is, if you vote yes on this, we're moving forward. We are going to hire, we're going to send an offer and we're going to negotiate a contract. Um and that's what that committee would be in charge of. So I yield.
Councilwoman Clark.
Well, I want to make a, a motion or move to that we postpone it just until um city manager Haley can present her vision for all the new people um and have a discussion and go from there. Because again, she's uh, although she's been acting um for a portion of time and um, and things like that, but at the same time, we need to do things decently. And I'm going to use these words, decently and in order. Um, and I feel like at this point, the way all this, this whole meeting, how all this has flowed, we are not doing that. And I, and if I'm not, if, if I'm not anything else, I am definitely a person that believes in decency and order.
Councilwoman Reed.
And Shane, thank you very much for how you explained that out. That was good. This is the reason why I asked for the meeting last week. So we could have all sit down and told what our goals and objectives were for the city. How we wanted to see things go. I know Haley's got some good ideas. We've talked, you know, and, and so uh, you know, this is, so this is, I guess we're still behind, but whatever.
Ms. Mayor.
Yes.
So here we go again. I'm sorry, City Attorney. Point of order, there was supposed to be a second. You were supposed to, Mayor um Snyder, you were supposed to ask if there was a second before you called on Councilwoman Reed.
Well, I believe that, don't we have to address the first motion?
Ms. Um, Ms. Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
I'm sorry, this is, and parliamentary procedure is, is, is a tricky thing for everybody, so please don't think it's, it's, it's just humor or anything. Um, so there's a nuance here. Um, what Councilwoman Clark effectively made was a motion to table. When a motion to table is made, you have, that is, that is one that would supersede and that needs to be addressed before you go to the main motion.
So I apologize, Councilwoman Clark. So do we have a second to um move towards tabling this discussion?
Second. Because we all over the place.
Thank you.
All right. So then City Clerk Domingo, do we uh take a roll call on this, or do we discuss this tabling motion first?
We discuss the tabling motion.
Okay. Councilwoman Lanu.
I believe uh Councilman Williamson had his hand up.
I believe, uh, Councilman Williamson had his hand up prior to me.
Councilman Williamson.
I've, I've spoken a bunch, so it's.
Okay. I wanted to be clear, when I, uh, initiated the conversation around the vision, I know that we have a comprehensive plan that outlines the, the city's vision, and this council has, uh, uh, agreed upon goals, and Haley has worked on those. And, and I also see how that could come across as sounding like an interview process. Um, I was just getting at, understanding how, as a collective, we are going to be enacting everything that has already been established, and then addressing these new concerns under COVID. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, great. That's what I wanted to say. Go ahead.
Councilman Williamson.
Okay, so I, I want to say a couple of things. And the first one I want, I want everyone to hear, and I think is the most important thing. We've now discussed this for however long during this council meeting, and we're discussing someone's employment in front of them, in front of the entire city, to see at, at the, the minute this is over. The minute you have decided that you want to table this, remember the effect that that has on the person who may or may not want that job. And I think that, I think that says a lot. There are not many positions in this world where you get to watch your position be, um, debated in front of you, um, by seven different people, um, and then have to live with it for several weeks, and then, and then have them come back to the table and decide again. So I think there's some collateral damage being done, um, to a really great public servant tonight. Um, and I want to make sure that if we vote to table this, everyone is going to be committing to having thoughtful conversations with Ms. Snyder about what, about their priorities on council, about what they think council can do. And also to have conversation about, with Ms. Snyder about her, how she, how she envisions being a leader in the city. That way, when we come back to this conversation at a subsequent meeting, we are better prepared to either outline a process forward for Ms. Snyder, to achieving the goal of having her be the city manager for our city, or to, or to make some, and, and, or to make another decision that has another big impact on our community. So, um, and I think, and I think a lot of this could have been prevented had we, had we had the time to learn a little bit more in our positions on council. So I do, I do want to apologize in advance to Ms. Snyder for this, because I, I can't imagine the amount of stress that she must be feeling as she watches her employment be debated in front of her, um, by the seven of us. And the, and the minute we, on a whim, can just say yes or no to something, and then her whole life changes. Um, and so not many of us have had, had to experience that here. So again, um, I, I am, for the most part, okay with moving forward in a delay. And we need to make sure that if we're gonna delay this, that we have some meaningful conversations with each other offline, offline, or with, and with Ms. Snyder. That way, when we come back to this table again, virtually, um, we're able to have a more thoughtful discussion. Thank you.
Councilwoman Lawler.
I think, uh, Councilmember McClark had her hand up, ma'am.
Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you. Um, so I only, um, voted to get, uh, to postpone it to get more information, such as, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, um, Jackson had asked for. No way am I trying to, um, make this uncomfortable for city manager mayor, I, I mean, city manager Snyder. But at the same time, I think she's, I think she's got tough enough skin that this is, will be just a minor stepping stone to when, when and if she steps into the job of other things that she's going to have to face. So I think, yes, it may be uncomfortable, but at the same token, that's a part of being a city manager, because you're always gonna be in, in situations where you're uncomfortable, and things aren't exactly, uh, the best, um, atmosphere that you would want it to be. That's even on being on council, on council. For me, you know, and some of the other ones, there's been times that where I had to disagree with the mayor. There has been times where we've disagreed with others, and it's been in front of the whole city, and everybody's watched. It's a part of the job. It comes with the territory. And I you.
Councilman Lawler.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, I just want to kind of echo off of what Councilmember, um, uh, Williamson was saying about discussing her. That's, this is exactly why I said, don't be missing in her name. We should have just been, are we gonna go through the process, or are we just gonna choose without a process? Um, I kind of tried to make that statement. I, I have trouble sometimes, uh, saying what I really want to, but, I, I do agree with that, uh, about us discussing her specifically. That's why I wanted to keep it, um, widened and just say, are we gonna go through the process, or are we not? Thank you.
All right, so City Clerk Domingo, can we take a roll call on tabling this discussion?
Councilmember Reed.
No.
Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Lenu.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes. So do we, uh, to proceed with this, um,
Plenty of information has been tabled. So we, we can bring it up at a, at a, at the next meeting or a meeting after that. It just has to come up again in a later meeting.
All right. I could kind of last track here. So we had a request to discuss ADPS process. Councilwoman Clark.
What are we discussing? I'm sorry.
The ADPS process.
Oh, okay. So I spoke with, um, I spoke with, uh, the city commissioner, and I spoke with, uh, a couple of the officers, um, with, um, the, uh, cause we were supposed to have someone come in and talk about the process and what things, some of the things that have gone forward. And what I found out, what I thought would be helpful for a lot of the city and some of us to find out is, because of COVID, during this process, there has been uh, situations where people have gone to court, and the court was postponed. And, and there were criminal charges, um, that could have necessarily, uh, been waived, uh, for a guilty or a non-gilty charge because of, of the law, the statute of limitations for the right to have a speedy trial. So this has been causing, uh, a domino effect on our police departments. And whether we realize it or not, I don't even think anybody has realized that even in the court systems, how much this COVID has affected. I know we're, we're walking through it, but at the same time, it's causing a lot of situations. So to put the, some of the people in the city, um, at ease and thinking that there's things that are not being done, and, and why aren't they doing this, and why they aren't doing that, that is one of the major things that, um, uh, the commissioner told me that he would bring, uh, up to them and discuss with them to see if, I'm sorry, my phone, my computer's about to lose power, so I'm trying to find the cord. Discuss with them about that going forward. Cause after I talked to him, it just made a whole lot of sense of what's going on. And, um, with situations in our cities and things that we're seeing and not seeing. And I thought that it would, you know, be good for the, uh, the citizens to know that. So do you all understand what I just said? Cause sometimes I'm kind of general. So you wouldn't want, um, if I was, if I was being charged, if I had a charge against me, to make it simple, if I had a charge against me right now, and I was getting ready to go to court for it, and, and the evidence was presented, I might be a guilty person, but because of due process, or I might be an innocent person, but because of due process, it could get thrown out of court, period. Or you, or you could be presenting it to the court to even take people to court, and it's still being postponed over and over again, where you can't even start the, the beginning process of it. And that's kind of where we're at. And I'm sure if we're like that, it's everywhere. So I kind of asked him to bring it, you know, to the forefront to see if, if they have any, um, action plans on how to fix this, or, because COVID's not going away. So we've got a, you know, as a people, we've got to figure out how to move forward and how to get things done. So kudos to the police department, um, for making that really clear to me, and, um, and I was able to speak to people and, and give them a better idea of why, and I think they understood.
Any, uh, questions or comments for Councilwoman Clark? All right, so, uh, we'll go on to the, um, North Clark Street improvements.
City manager.
Here, we have one more before that. Um, the agenda was amended before that, um, Resolution 2020-58. It's a resolution to approve temporary, um, the suspension, suspension and late fees on the water services.
Oh, okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
And a second?
Before.
I'm with the CS Council. So, um, the legislative, um, approved late last Thursday, early Friday morning, um, to temporarily, um, to waive, water shut-offs moving forward. Governor Whitmore, she, uh, released an emergency order back at the early of the year, doing, um, something similar through the end of this year. Um, with her, um, with the Supreme Court ruling her emergency orders nonvoid, the legislature have just, um, put forward a bill to kind of reinstate the suspension on, um, shutting off water fees, and that will go through March 31st of 2020. And this is, it was, has been presented to the governor at 12:50 earlier this afternoon. I have not seen if she has officially signed this bill into, um, law yet, but this would just allow us, we'll have it put in place once she does, um, sign off on that bill.
Any questions or comments?
Counselor Lawler, I think you're sharing your screen right now.
I don't know what that means.
I was trying to figure out what was going on.
There we go.
Okay, am I here now?
Any questions? I'm not seeing any hands. City Clerk Domingo, do you want to take a roll call on this for me, please?
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler.
You're muted.
Sorry, yes.
Lenu.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder.
Yes. Right now, our North Clark Street improvement.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So it's a final contract modification for this street project. Part of that project, um, required a few trees to be replaced, um, to, um, account for the widening of the roadway. With the delay, um, in getting the telephone poles, um, relocated, and then the, on the cold temperatures, we, we're, the sub, the contractor were unable to get those trees planted, um, before the completion date. So Mead Brothers, the contractor who handled this project, has agreed to, um, re, take care of the trees during the springtime for the same cost. This will allow us to close out the grant with the state of Michigan, um, with MDOT. Um, and then we will just enter into a new agreement for the replanting of the trees in the spring 2021 with Mead Brothers. There's no change to any of the, um, uh, project costs or anything. This is just a new agreement for Mead Brothers for the replanting of the trees at a later time.
Any questions or concerns, comments? All right, uh, do we have a motion to approve? Or do we need a motion?
Second.
City Clerk Domingo, do you want to take a roll call on this?
Councilmember Lawler.
Yes.
Lenu.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder.
Yes. All right, future agenda items. Councilman Lawler.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I want to, um, add to the, uh, the future agenda, um, parliamentary, uh, procedures and policies about someone coming in to talk to us, possibly, um, attorney Al Smith. About him coming, that just, uh, some of parliamentary procedures. I could use it.
Any other items for?
Ms. Mayor.
Yes.
We're, I'm gonna be bringing to council, uh, some modifications to our medical marijuana ordinance that we currently have on the books, and some proposed and recommended modifications to our zoning ordinance that tie in with that. So I just wanted to make the council aware of that.
Okay. Councilwoman Reed.
No, I, I think we could put off for all five. Just like that's a, a question, uh, of Councilwoman Lawler, is that for training? Okay, because I, I think.
Yeah, for a, uh, parliamentary procedure training. You like the Coco and, and, uh, Al Smith, Mr. Reed.
A Councilman Reed. I think Mr. Smith is a little bit more expensive than Coco is, but Coco, because.
Okay, whichever one we, whichever one we want to side at the time that we have a discussion about the parliamentary procedure and who we want to do it. We can have that discussion then.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other items? Wonderful. Do we have anybody, um, that would like to make a public comment?
Hello, uh, it's me again. Uh, I was not a Garrett Brown, 1016 South Springfield. Wasn't intending to comment, but just again, listening to the meetings, thank you, Councilmember, um, Lawler for that. Either one would be good, and I, I think there's, there's a couple of things that are going on here. So I think, one, there has to be an understanding about what the roles are. So like, like someone mentioned during the city manager debate, like, what does a city manager actually do? When I was mayor, and there was controversy between myself and the previous city manager, there was a, came to my attention, there was a, a person in the community who made a comment. They said, well, the city manager comes to all my events, and they glad-hand me and smile, and, you know, I feel good about it. And I don't know what she does in her day job, but I know that that, that's what I want to see in a city manager, right? Um, but we all know, especially you, who have had experience on the council, that feeling good and having personal relationships is not the measure of a, an effective city manager, right? There are technicalities with, uh, Public Works, the Water Department, um, all kinds of projects and grants and things. And so those are the things that most people don't get to see the backside of. And so I think as the council goes forward, I, I heard what, uh, Councilmember Lenu said, is that we do want a visionary, uh, city manager, but we have to make sure that, it doesn't come at the expense of respecting, again, the, the place of council and the, the, the place of the manager, right? So I think those are the things that the council probably should focus on is governance, like what, what are our roles? And then the other part is, how do we run a meeting in an orderly fashion, which is the parliamentary procedure, um, part of it. And then the other part is how do we run a meeting in an orderly fashion, which is the parliamentary procedure, um, part of it? So, um, just wanted to throw that out there. And I think that is, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else out there that would like to speak? All right, not seeing any. We'll go to the city manager report.
Oh, hang on.
Yes, I'm, I'm here. Took a minute for my unmute option to pop up. Sonia Brown, 713 Orchard Drive. Um, I just want to applaud council because what I saw tonight was very thoughtful and passionate dialogue. And I think you all did, I mean, a great job in, in asking questions and, you know, just really talking about how to move the city forward in the best possible way. I will say that I was a little disappointed that there was no discussion about the local emergency and the possible impact that could have on protecting the city staff. So I just wanted to mention that. And I'm, I'm going to say this because I have been where you're sitting and there are things you need to be mindful and watchful of. Um, and attorney hardness, you give great legal advice. The role of the city attorney is to do just that, gives legal advice. I just kind of cringed when you personally endorsed interim city manager Snyder. Only because in your role as the attorney for the city, you need to be objective. And the attorney and city manager work very closely together. Um. So I just, I couldn't, I couldn't not mention that. I had heard that cringed a bit. Ooh, and just wanted to mention it publicly. Um, but great job, council. I'm rooting for you all. Um, let's move Albion forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonia. Any other, oh. Do we have somebody else?
Gary Tompkins.
Good evening, buddy. Gary Tompkins, York County Commissioner. Good evening, everybody. I'll be very, very brief this evening. I just wanted to take a few moments and wish each and every one of you a very happy holiday, a great new year. Certainly looking forward to working with all of you in 2021. Move Albion forward and just looking forward to it. There's a lot of excitement in the air and we'll, uh, again, have a great holiday with your family for as much as you're able to and, uh, look forward to working with you. All right? So have a great evening, everybody. Thank you.
You too.
That's all.
Okay, awesome. Right, city manager report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So a copy of my report was included in the meeting packet, just to provide you with an update on the city hall operations. Um, city hall's front lobby is open to the public from Monday through Friday from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. I, please note, uh, we do have our temporary tele, telework policy in place in accordance with the MSHA, MSHA guidelines. So any employee who is able to perform their work remotely is doing so. And we also have our front finance office on a rotational schedule so that all, um, employees are not in the same office at the same time. Um, so we do encourage our residents to continue to utilize the front drop, drop box and to utilize the online cash payment methods. Um, I would just like to provide you with an update on the merger of the, the potential merger of the EDC, DDA and Albion Chamber. The first work group meeting was held, um, Wednesday, December 16th. Um, we met with Richard Lindsay to kind of discuss the process and what that would look like if the entities merged together. The work group is aiming to have a service agreement ready to present to each board by their scheduled meetings in February. Um, February 4th is the EDC, February 10th, DDA, um, February 18th with the Chamber. And once they are reviewed and approved by those boards, it will then come for council for that final review and approval. Um, staffing update. So the city, we have a few positions that have been posted and we have held interviews for. Um, interviews have been held for the executive assistant to the city manager position. I'm happy to announce Jesse Whitfield has formally accepted the position and will begin on Monday, December 28th. I'm extremely excited to have some port within that office. Um, and then we recently held interviews for the director of planning and building position. As you're aware, Director Tracy is set to retire at the end of January. So we are doing initial background checks on those candidates. Councilmember Clark asked for an update on the equipment inventory, so I'd just like to share that our Department of Public Services, we are in the process of conducting an inventory on all of our equipment, seeing if we can get rid of some. We do have, um, oh, why did the word just split in my mind? Oh, an auction process. So we will be looking to see if we have some equipment that we can auction off, um, and get rid of. So that is in the works. Um, and then holiday hours. I just would like to remind everyone that city hall will be closed Thursday and Friday in observance for, of Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, and then the following Thursday and Friday for New Year's Eve and New Year's Day. And I would just like to wish everyone a safe and happy holiday season.
Thank you, City Manager Snyder. Um, any questions or comments? On the report? Councilwoman Lenoe?
Oh, I know, not on the report. My apologies. I thought you were at the council member comments.
Nope. Okay, so now we can go on to council member comments. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to offer to the council, I've, I've heard several times talking about roles and the, the previous council had the opportunity to actually have a two-hour study session dedicated specifically to understanding the roles of council, the mayor and the city manager. And that was on January 11th, 2018. So you can type in that date. And I just, I'm all about using what we have. And so I think that that's something we could all do, you know, before our next meeting. And he, he was very thorough and it was very helpful information. So I just wanted to offer that. And then, of course, wish all you very well over the holidays in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you.
And the community as well.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
So particularly, the people that are on council, that have been on council for many years already know this, uh, but this is, so this is more for the newer members of council. If any of you have questions about procedure or our charter or our ordinances and things of that nature, please feel free to reach out to me either by email or by phone. I'm happy to answer all of your questions. It's, it's, I, I always say it's best to ask those in, in advance of the meeting if you can, but if not, I'm always happy to do it on the spot, but I just want to, I don't want the council to have any hesitation about reaching out if, if there are those questions, because there will be those questions.
Thank you. Yes, Councilwoman Lawler?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, I just wanted to say two positive things that I did this weekend and I am proud in Albion. Um, the first, uh, thing that I did this past weekend was I attended the Brick Street Lots. They are beautiful. And you can tell you spent some money in there. I took my mother with me and, um, I think she wants to put her house up for sale because she wants to watch the parade downtown. So I think she's trying to, uh, you know, be, be nice and, and, and just try to get down, downtown some kind of way. But, um, it's beautiful in there. Um, I have no regrets about ever saying, uh, don't do it. Um, the people that put those lots together and just put the whole downtown together is, is awesome. I, I, I could not envision the vision that you had for it, but it is coming together for us to see. Um, I am proud of, um, our, our entities coming together and working together to, um, have new businesses come downtown. I'm happy about that. Um, I know that we got a couple on the way, so be ready. And man, you are doing good. When people say let's move Albion forward, you are moving forward. So don't let them think that you, uh, say that you're not moving forward because you are, you are Albion. Um, the second thing, um, I want to say it was very awesome to see the kids do a drive-through pickup of their, um, Christmas gifts uh, from, through, um, uh, playwright basketball with, um, Coach Milton Barnes. Um, it was a sight to see when you see little kids, um, got a gift and can't open them till Christmas. Torture you guys that do it over there at playwright basketball. I just thought that it was great to have a collaboration with, um, two businesses, um, at least to try to help service, uh, how they were gonna distribute the toys to everyone and everyone that complete, that, uh, donated toys to that organization. You guys rock. So I just wanted to let Albion know it's positive things going on here. Don't, they, they ain't gonna be able to talk about us no more because we got it going on right now.
Councilman Williamson?
Good evening. I wanted to share a couple of things, um, about the end of the year. Um, it's been a really strange, interesting, unprecedented year. And in Albion, there have been an extraordinary group of people who have been working so hard to make sure that people are fed, to make sure people have their bills covered, um, to make sure that kids have what they need, to make sure that the summer program, some sort of summer programming happened, that daycare actually happened, that people who still had to go to work had childcare. Um, I want you to think about all the progress that was made this year in Albion. And I want you to think of places like the YMCA, um, the Albion Homer United Way, the Albion Community Foundation, the Bone Theater, Playwright Academy. There are tons of organizations who have been keeping, um, our community together behind the scenes, you know, it. Um, I, I don't think we all feel the total weight of the world that is sitting on our shoulders in this community as we navigate through COVID-19. And so I want to encourage all of my fellow council members, um, anyone at home who's watching, if you have any, um, anything left to give this year, to consider some of those organizations and those people who've been working so hard to make sure that the, um, the many of our neighbors who needed help and assistance, um, were able to get that. And so I've had the privilege of, uh, being able to be part of those conversations as we coordinate these efforts this year. But there are so many people to list, um, and to formally thank when this is all said and done. So I just want to make everyone aware of that. Um, and as you think about your end of year giving and if you're able to, um, spend some resources in the community to support philanthropy, um, it's one of the most important things you could do this year. Is making sure that our nonprofits are able to take care of people. So, um, a big heartfelt thanks to all of you who have already done that or volunteered. And let's end 2020 strong by supporting these organizations who have supported so many here in Albion. Thanks.
So I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. Any other comments? Well, I too, um, want to say I hope you all have a very merry Christmas, a restful break. I know that, you know, Christmas may not look the same way, but you know, from what Councilwoman Lawler and Councilman Williamson said, you know, we are still pulling together to do what's best for our community. You know, tonight's discussion, we all want to make sure we're doing things the right way. So that was evident. So I appreciate the dialogue. Uh, I do apologize. For some reason, my screen likes to jump around, so my little Brady Bunch boxes tend to move on me. So that's why I don't always see who is throwing up their hands. And sometimes it's really hard when all I get to see is like from your eyes up and I don't always see the hand. So maybe we want to make sure that we all get in and focus in the screen so that, yeah, I can see the hands when they do go up. So I apologize for not being able to catch everybody in that timely manner. But I do appreciate all of our hard work. Um, we definitely deserve a, a break, a rest. Um, and that way we can be rejuvenated when we come back in January. Any other comments from our council? Nope. Right, so, um, we did not have any absent council members. So, um, City Clerk Domingo, do we take a full, final roll call?
You can move to adjourn the meeting. We can do the roll call.
All right, a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, City Clerk Domingo, the roll call, please.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Lenoe?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder?
Yes. All right, y'all. Have a good night. It was a long meeting.
Thank you.
Bye.